Okay, let's go.
The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. I welcome everyone who is following this, the third day of Public Hearing 10. The subject matter of this hearing is the education and training of health professionals for the care and treatment of people with disability. We begin, as we do with all our hearings, with an acknowledgement of country. I wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of this land, and pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galbulay is sitting. I pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I also pay our respects to all First Nations people viewing this hearing on the live stream. The first two days of this hearing were held on 15 and 16 December 2020. Anyone interested in the subject matter of the hearing can bring themselves up to date if they wish by reading the transcript of the hearing of those days, which is available on the Royal Commission's website. Today's hearing is being conducted from the Sydney Hearing Room of the Royal Commission. I am joined in the Sydney Hearing Room by Commissioner Rosalind Atkinson AO and Commissioner Barbara Bennett PSM. Commissioner Rhonda Galbulay AC is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. Council Assisting the Royal Commission at this hearing, Ms Kate Eastman SC, who appears with Ms Georgina Wright of Council. As Ms Eastman explained on the first day of this public hearing, the format is rather different from that of other public hearings held by the Royal Commission. As I have noted, we are investigating the education and training of health professionals. For obvious reasons, most witnesses today are representatives of educational institutions, professional associations or bodies responsible for the accreditation of health professionals. The witnesses today will be giving evidence either remotely or by video. Each of the witnesses will have been sworn or affirmed, as the case may be, prior to their giving evidence. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Good morning, Commissioners. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the lands we are meeting today. We pay our respects to First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people following this public hearing. As the Chair has mentioned, this is the third and final day of Public Hearing 10. In December, Commissioners, you heard from 27 witnesses about the education and training of health professionals in Australia with respect to people with cognitive disability, and our focus then was on medicine and nursing. Today, we convene four panels, and you'll hear from health professionals and allied health professionals in the areas of speech pathology, pharmacy, psychology and dentistry. Again, our focus is deliberately on the people and institutions with responsibility for education, training of health professionals, and those people who have the capacity to affect change. We will adopt the same format as the December hearing. So before some of the panels, we will revisit evidence from previous hearings and hear again from people with lived experience about their interactions with the health profession. We will then turn to the members of each panel and ask them to address the propositions developed by Council Assisting. And a copy of those propositions is available on the Royal Commission's website. It's not altered from the hearing in December. Commissioners, you'll recall that the propositions for change are grouped into three main categories. First, framework. That proposes the development of a standardised competency framework to guide the development of all reforms to education and training. Secondly, the fundamentals, which proposes key content and procedural elements that should guide and inform all training and education. And thirdly, the training phases. And those are the propositions that set out specific stages to education and training. This afternoon, we will conclude the hearing with Mr Simon Cotrell, the First Assistant Secretary, Primary Healthcare Commonwealth Department of Health. Mr Cotrell has given evidence at the Royal Commission at Public Hearing Four and more recently at Public Hearing Five concerning the impact of COVID-19 on people with disability. Commissioners, you'll recall that in August 2019, the Commonwealth Department of Health convened a round table with a focus on people with intellectual disability and their families, together with academics, experts and healthcare providers across a range of disciplines, to discuss the challenges facing people with intellectual disability in accessing appropriate healthcare and the opportunities to improve the system. The Commonwealth Department of Health says this: "The National Roadmap will increase recognition that people living with intellectual disability have the right to the same quality and access to health services as every other Australian." You'll hear this afternoon from Mr Cotrell about the progress over the past 12 months, including recent meetings to address education and training of health professionals. We will ask Mr Cotrell about the Commonwealth Department of Health's next steps and the implementation strategies for the various initiatives in the National Roadmap. Before we commence, can I again remind those following the proceedings that there are protections for witnesses? The Royal Commission's Act has a clear objective of protecting witnesses who give evidence before the Royal Commission. And in particular, again, I want to draw attention to Section 6, capital M, of that Act that provides that any person who uses, causes or inflicts any violence, punishment, damage, loss or disadvantage to any person on account of the person having appeared as a witness or given evidence before or producing documents to the Royal Commission commits an indictable offence. The maximum penalty for committing such an offence is imprisonment. Commissioners, there is an additional tender bundle, which we have described as Tender Bundle C, that contains the evidence relevant to today's proceedings. Commissioners, you recall that on the first day of the hearing, you received into evidence a number of documents that you marked as volumes, Tender Bundle A and Tender Bundle B, so the exhibits are set out in those two bundles. If it's convenient, may I now tender the further volume of material which is set out in Tender Bundle C that comprises the statements and documents relevant to today's proceedings and some additional documents arising from the last occasion. With respect to the documents in Tender Bundle C, could I ask that you receive them and mark them as Exhibits 10.88 through to 10.107, and we'll circulate an updated exhibits list shortly?
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
Commissioners, I think that there are a number of parties who have been granted leave to appear, who may wish to make their appearances.
Yes, thank you. Could I invite any party granted leave to appear who is appearing today to announce their appearances?
May I please the Commission? My name is Costello, and I appear on behalf of the Commonwealth.
Yes, thank you, Mr Costello.
My name is Gail. I appear on behalf of the State of New South Wales.
Thank you, Ms Vanessa.
Good morning. My name is MacMillan. Initials KI, Senior Counsel, and I appear with Ms Chloe Hesey, instructed by Crown Law for Queensland.
Thank you, Ms MacMillan. Are there any other appearances to announce? Thank you. Yes.
Commissioners, the first witness is Claire Hewitt of the Allied Health Professions Australia, and so I call her now.
Thank you, Ms Wright. We'll just wait for Ms Hewitt to appear on the screen. Good morning, Ms Hewitt. I think we can see you on the screen now. I hope you can see us.
Yes, indeed. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you very much for coming to the Commission to give evidence. Just before I ask Ms Wright to ask you some questions, just to ensure you know where we all are, there are three Commissioners in our Sydney Hearing Room, namely Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Bennett and myself, and Commissioner Galbulay is joining the proceedings from Melbourne. I'll now ask Ms Wright, who is in the Sydney Hearing Room, to ask you some questions. Thank you.
Ms Hewitt, could you please state your full name?
Elizabeth Claire Hewitt.
You've provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the 29th of January 2020.
Correct.
Correct. Commissioners, that's at tab two of your hearing folders. Ms Hewitt, you're the Chief Executive Officer of Allied Health Professions Australia.
Correct.
APA for short, is that right?
That's correct.
APA is the peak representative body for the allied health professions in Australia.
Yes, that's correct.
And it has 20 member associations, each representing a specific allied health profession. Is that so?
Correct.
There are also 12 affiliate member associations, being groups that are aligned with allied health or emerging professions.
Correct.
Is an example of that the Hearing Aid Audiology Society of Australia.
Yes, it is.
In terms of your experience, Ms Hewitt, you're a trained dietitian with over 30 years' experience in practice in a wide range of settings.
Correct.
What is the size of the total allied health workforce in Australia?
The estimate is 200,000. It's only an estimate because the self-regulated professions, at this stage, it's very difficult to collect the data. But we estimate 200,000 currently practising.
There are both regulated or registered professions under the National Registration and Accreditation Scheme, as well as, as you've said, self-regulated professions.
Correct.
And allied health professionals as a whole represent almost a third of the country's healthcare workforce. Is that the case?
It is.
In terms of the registered professions, it might just assist those watching if we were to identify what they are. Are there nine registered allied health professions?
The... It depends on your definition, but for us, there are physiotherapy, chiropractic, osteopathy, pharmacy, podiatry, just trying to go, occupational therapy, psychology.
Optometrists.
Optometrists, that's right.
You've done very well. Medical radiation.
Yeah, sorry.
And medical radiation, I think is now...
Medical radiation.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And each of those registered professions has its own national board, which is responsible for overseeing education standards and the making of complaints against practitioners and verifying that practitioners are meeting or have met standards for practice. Is that right?
Correct.
And for these self-regulating professions, they have their own peak or professional associations which look after the accreditation process and set the professional standards.
Correct.
Is there a difference in terms of education and training? Is that difference in regulation relevant, in your view?
No. The regulation, whether self-regulated or under APA, is very robust, and they're very similar, and the training is very similar.
Each of the professions more or less determines its own training and education processes?
Yes.
And content. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
In terms of what allied health is more broadly, they are health professions which are not part of the medical, dental and nursing professions. Is that the case?
That is correct, yes.
It's not in your statement, but I understand APA has developed its own definition of what an allied health profession is, and it might assist just to identify that. It is a profession which has a direct patient care role. Is that one aspect of the definition?
Yes, that is correct.
Do all allied health professions, are they all engaged in frontline service delivery? In other words, they're all patient-facing?
All professions have members who are patient-facing, but some have members who are not. But there must at least be a percentage of the profession who are patient-facing, and that's the majority of the professionals in those professions.
To be an allied health profession, it must also be a profession which requires a university health science qualification at AQF Level 7 or higher.
Correct.
And a national professional organisation with a code of ethics and code of conduct.
Yes.
As well as clearly articulated national entry-level competency standards and assessment procedures, and a defined core scope of practice.
Correct.
What is AQF Level 7, for those of us unfamiliar?
AQF Level 7 is a bachelor's degree or above. The majority of allied health professions are above.
In what sense above?
They are masters and some of them are PhD.
Thank you.
Entry-level qualified.
There are clearly a very broad range of professions within the allied health professions. Could you just give us an overview of the types of work that allied health professionals do and the settings in which they work?
Yeah, allied health professionals work extremely broadly, across a wide range of settings. Of course, they're in health, in private and public hospitals, in community health, in private practice, in rehabilitation. But they also work in disability. They are the key professional workforce under the NDIS. They work in aged care. They work in corrections and community services. They work in education. They work in the military. Basically, almost anywhere you will find allied health professions undertaking a variety of roles. They also work in policy management, in public health and preventive activities, in academia and research.
And you've identified in your statement to the Royal Commission that some of the professions work more directly in the disability field than others.
Yes.
Professions having the largest proportion of workers who work with people with cognitive disabilities. Do they include speech pathologists, occupational therapists, psychologists? What other professions would you identify?
They would be probably the main, actually doing the work with cognitive disability. But there would be smaller professions like music and art therapy, who would work in that area. Also, social work would work there, particularly the mental health social workers. But you would also have smaller numbers in other professions, such as physiotherapy, dietetics, exercise physiology. Most of the professions will work with people with cognitive disability at some stage, even if they're not actually providing specific disability services.
Do you consider that there are core skills for treating people with cognitive disabilities that are common to and required by all of those allied health professionals?
Yes. There is a way of working with various groups. Cognitive disability is one of them, and they would be core skills. There's core skills for physical disability, for mental health, for working with culturally and linguistically diverse communities. So all of those things have core skills.
And in your view, is there a need for a national competency framework that identifies the specific competencies which allied health professionals should have, regardless of the profession in which they are situated?
Yes, APA supports that.
Your statement to the Royal Commission draws a distinction between health professionals who have a specific disability focus in their work and those who work in more mainstream settings in the health system and who may only occasionally provide services to people with cognitive disability. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And APA proposes, in essence, competency frameworks calibrated to the level of risk of the particular professions and the particular risks that particular professions present to patients with cognitive disability. Could I ask you to speak to that?
Yes, because if you are treating people specifically for cognitive disability, then obviously you're going to need a much higher skill level, and you're going to need to be very well-equipped. And if it's something that you're doing all the time, you are going to have a different set of requirements to someone who is providing mainstream health services, who only occasionally encounters somebody with cognitive disability. They are quite different levels of knowledge and skill and competence. There are obviously base levels of competency that everybody needs, regardless of where they're working or what services they're providing. But then there needs to be a higher tier for those who are actually providing services to people with cognitive disability as a significant part of their workload.
A proposition being tested in this hearing is the development of a competency framework. And I think you've been provided with those propositions. Perhaps if Proposition 1 could be placed on the screen, if possible. Ms Hewitt, that proposition puts forward a competency framework for health professionals, which would include relevant allied health professionals. And it proposes consultation between all of the stakeholders, including people with disability and their family support persons and stakeholders in the higher education system. Propositions 3 and 4, if they could be placed on the screen, they identify some of the areas that a competency framework could deal with, such as the role, the importance of physical environments. In Proposition 4, the role and legal requirements around adjustments, communication, knowledge and skills, and the supports a person with cognitive disability may use in decision-making. Is it the case that all allied health workers would need these skills, regardless of whether they are working in mainstream settings, as you've said, or are more patient-facing with a disability focus?
They would need all of these, working in a disability focus, at an extensive level. People working occasionally with people with cognitive disability would need a clear awareness of these things and certainly need to know where to go for more information. It's really a case of making sure you know what you don't know and know where to go to find that information. Because people working in a generalist situation need to be across a wide range of things for a wide range of people, and there are often similarities. You may need to make similar adjustments for people with mental health issues. There may be adjustments that need to be made for people of First Nations people. So whether there's a need for extensive information on each of those or a baseline understanding for those only working occasionally, and then a higher level for those working in the disability space is something that APA strongly advocates for.
In your view, are there likely to be gaps in the training that's presently provided, whether to particular professions or overall, in terms of some of these matters?
I think it will vary from profession to profession. Those professions that automatically work commonly in those disability spaces are likely to have higher levels of competency already and aspects of their training that are already there. Those who are more likely to work only occasionally in that space may not have that same level of training. But they may well have other approaches to dealing with diversity and dealing with complexities that can be adapted. So I think the important thing is to map what is already there. A lot of allied health professions will already at least have some of this in their training and some more extensively than others.
And would such a framework, if it was agreed by all the different stakeholders, be helpful, in your view, to the education providers in each profession in determining what to teach or in benchmarking or evaluating their existing programmes?
Yes. A framework would certainly be of value to guide the development of those programmes or to map what is already there in their courses or might require adaption.
Ms Hewitt, I think you said earlier that, in your view, there are core requirements for allied health professionals who may be providing services to people with cognitive disability. Does your organisation set out anywhere what those core requirements are?
No, that is not our role. It is the role of the individual professions to set out the core requirements for their professions. We don't do that for anything. Our purpose is for advocacy and looking at common issues for allied health. But we would certainly encourage that everyone, and that would include medical and nursing, look at a similar baseline, so that everybody is singing from the same song sheet, and we're not all learning different things.
Wouldn't this be a matter for advocacy by your organisation, it being a common issue?
We would advocate for it, but we can't set the standards for the professions. We can only encourage.
And have you encouraged or advocated up to that?
We've been doing a lot of work in the NDIS and providing feedback and advice on the development of their capability framework, which is something that would go across the professions. So we have been working with all our member organisations in providing feedback and advocacy in that area, which brings all of those things together.
Ms Hewitt, you say in your statement that your organisation convenes an expert working group focused on disability issues and consisting of disability experts from individual allied health professions. And you strongly recommend the involvement of this group in the development of a competency framework. And can you tell us about that group, who is in that group, what professions it represented in, and what is its current role?
The current role of that group is to work with our policy manager. It initially started when the NDIS rolled out, and it was to support the development of the NDIS and the work of allied health within the NDIS. It now has a broader disability focus, and it brings together experts from the professions who do work in the disability area, professions such as speech pathology, occupational therapy, social work, physiotherapy, exercise physiology, music therapy, the range I talked about before. And they're all the experts from those professions, understanding that those professions have a broad focus, they have experts in a whole range of areas. These are people who are very experienced and highly qualified in working in the disability space.
And how many people are in that group?
I think currently it's about nine.
Right, and you could provide the name of that group and the name of the people involved in it to us?
Certainly. It's the Disability Working Group, the names are not on the top of my head at the moment.
Of course.
Excuse me, just following that question up from Commissioner Atkinson, can you also let us know how many people with disability leaders are on that group? You know, leadership people, thank you.
Sorry, in terms, it, it, it is only representatives of the professions on that group. There, there's a representative from physio, a representative, but we, that is purely an internal group to APA.
And those people aren't people with disabilities who are part of the professions?
No, well, they could be, but that's not a requirement.
And is it your evidence that that group, if there were to be a competency framework developed common to the allied health profession, professions, that group would be involved in the development of the competency framework?
That group would certainly be the core group that would be providing feedback around the, the development of the competency framework, yes.
And would facilitate communication between the different allied health professions?
Yes, yes. They feed back to their individual professions and seek advice from their individual professions to inform all the work that they do.
And do you envisage that they could work with other stakeholders such as education providers, universities, for example?
Yes, of course.
If I could ask you about some of the other propositions, Ms Hewitt, perhaps if Proposition 5 could be placed on the screen? That proposes that at appropriate points, training and education for health professionals should address the importance and skills necessary to work collaboratively with families, support people and advocates and professionals from various health and social disciplines. So it's looking at collaboration and a multidisciplinary team approach. Working within a multidisciplinary team is a significant feature of allied health work, is it not?
It is, very much so. It's not always possible, but that's certainly the way that allied health prefers to work, particularly when you're dealing with complex situations.
In your statement to the commission in response to Question 5, you identified that you were invited to present to the Commonwealth Department of Health targeted group discussion on curriculum development in healthcare for people with intellectual disability.
Yes.
That was on the 19th of November last year.
Correct.
And the commissioners, the department summary of that discussion is at tab 43 of the hearing book. Ms Hewitt, you presented on interdisciplinary education for health professionals, is that right?
I did.
And you highlighted, according to the summary prepared by the department, the need to look at training as a continuum. And you said that interprofessional education is essential to a more integrated, this multidisciplinary approach to healthcare for people with intellectual disability and that any reforms to current curricula require interdisciplinary collaboration. Does that fairly encapsulate your views or some of the, the views that you put forward at that discussion?
It does, it, because it promotes that more holistic approach to care. And it also, as I said earlier, if you're looking at interdisciplinary education, you're looking at providing all of the people who might be part of that multidisciplinary team, whether in disability services or not, with a similar baseline from which they're learning, rather than everybody coming from different points of view. So encouraging that interdisciplinary learning, that understanding improves everybody's understanding of what other people in the team's roles are, how they can assist with providing better services. So it, that sort of interdisciplinary, multidisciplinary training is of value.
And could I invite your views on Proposition 5? And if you need it to be placed back up on the screen, that can be done.
Yep.
And does it, does, does it, does it need to go further to encourage interdisciplinary collaboration in the setting of curricula, not, not merely that skills about working in a disciplinary, multidisciplinary team should be taught to students?
Yes, I think it does need to go further because one of the biggest issues, not just in disability, but in health generally, is that often we learn in silos and when we get into the, the, into the world, we still think very much in our silos. And that's not necessarily very helpful for patients, clients, participants, consumers, whatever you want to call them. They want continuity of care, they want understanding, they want their team around them to all understand what's happening with them. And it, it's important to break down those silos so that, that there's a common understanding of what people are dealing with.
If a competency framework were to be developed that is common to the allied health professions, does that call for that sort of collaboration and interdisciplinary approach between the professions?
Absolutely.
Is there anything else you'd like to say about Proposition 5 while that's on the screen?
No, but I would add that a lot of that is in the curriculum for a lot of health professions already. We are expected to work, not just in health, but we are expected to work outside of health with people like so, the, the, the social disciplines, social services. That's something that is core to allied health work.
And so it is the, the setting of the curricula in a more interdisciplinary way, which may be the element that's missing?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Could I also invite your comments on Proposition 7? If that could be put on the screen. That proposes mechanisms to enhance funded supervised clinical placements to promote and enhance learning and training in providing quality healthcare to people with cognitive disability, that that should be considered and scoped. What are the opportunities for clinical placements during primary allied health degrees? And who funds them?
By and large, allied health training is still done largely in, in the, the public hospital system. There is only limited opportunity for training outside of the public hospital system and certainly in the disability space. Now that the disability services have largely been devolved to NDIS, the training opportunities have actually significantly reduced. There used to be a really good pipeline, there were so, sort of well-recognised services where people could undertake placements, particularly if they had an interest in continuing working in the disability services. But those teams and that funding has disappeared. So now that is, is quite problematic. There's, the NDIS is a, a participant paying for their services. There's no stream of funding for student training within the NDIS and anybody with disability outside the NDIS, it's, it's serendipitous as to whether you get training or experience in your clinical placement. And private practice has great difficulty in, allied health private practitioners have great difficulty in taking students because it's, it's time consuming, it's expensive and there is minimal or no support for it.
What about post-graduation in early career development? Is there a mechanism for supervision and mentoring?
That again has diminished significantly with the changes from the disability being managed under the state systems to now being under NDIS. And it's a similar issue. There used to be new graduate streams where there would be positions set aside, available all the time for bringing new graduates through. That has disappeared and again, it's ad hoc. Some of the bigger disability services may, can take some early career allied health professionals, but there's not the, the funding to support the supervision or, and mentoring within those services. And again, in private practice, taking on a new graduate, you take them on at your own expense. They basically, there's, their productivity is clearly less, but that is something that a, a private practice would have to invest in of their own accord.
Sorry, Chris. Um, in, in the strategic plan that you provided to us, attach the documents, under one which is allied health is to recognise the valuable role in government policy, there is, under the third dot point, a reference that says, "In partnership with the Australian Dean, Council of Deans, to seek legislative change to permit students to undertake genuine active practicism in primary care settings." Is there a relationship to the point that you're making at the moment? And what legislation is a barrier to there being practice in primary care settings? And what difference, would it create part of the pathway that you're talking about if, well, what legislation is and would it make a difference?
Absolutely. The, the main legislation that we're talking about is the, the MBS and, and the mirroring DVA legislation where if you are seeing clients under DVA or MBS funding, that the student cannot provide services. They can sit with their hands behind their back and watch, but they are not allowed to touch the patient or undertake any care. That is not an effective way of training students. They actually need to get practice. And that's to do with the, the funding instrument. The funding instrument pays the practitioner and it does not allow for payment of students. So that is a real barrier, particularly either to people who use mostly DVA or MBS funding or even mixed funding because the student might be able to get hands-on practical experience with a privately funded patient, but would have to sit with their hands behind their back for a publicly funded patient, patient. So it's, it's very complex.
So just in, so this is like the item in which a doctor can charge to seek reimbursement either from the Medicare arrangements or through DVA? Is that the legislation you're talking about?
That is the legislation I'm talking about, yes.
DVA, I assume, is Department of Veterans Affairs, is it?
I'm, apologies, yes, it is.
So in other health training doctors, let's say, general practitioners, are they able to access payment? Or is there a, um, item for them to receive a payment?
I, look, I can't speak on behalf of doctors. I believe the arrangement is somewhat different for doctors, but certainly for allied health, we've been told very clearly that the, the funding instrument only allows the practitioner to provide the service. It cannot be a student providing the service.
So that is, the, the consequence of that is less people willing to go in or not getting the, uh, the experience in primary care? And therefore perhaps enhancing the experience of that on-the-ground practice with people with disability and their needs in?
Quite possibly. It, it would be, it's anyone under MBS or DVA. So it, it will vary, there'll be all sorts of different experiences. But the, the ability to get experience in primary care is significantly limited because of those, those fund, the funding instruments. It, there is also, that also can occur with other smaller funding instruments as well. So that does limit access to primary care. And then, as I have described, the change in the, the, the funding mechanisms now with NDIS have significantly reduced the pipeline there as well. So it, it's a combination.
Thank you. Those are my questions, commissioners.
Thank you. I'll ask the commissioners if they have any further questions for you, starting with Commissioner Galbally.
No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett? Do any of the council who have, or any of the legal practitioners who have leave to appeal wish to ask Ms Hewitt any questions?
No, thank you, Chin.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Hewitt, for coming to give evidence today to the Royal Commission. We appreciate your assistance, thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have a five-minute adjournment to reconstitute the...
Yes, we'll adjourn for five minutes to allow for the reconstitution of the witnesses on screen.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mrs.
Hi, commissioners, our next panel is going to address the area of speech pathology and the Royal Commission will hear evidence from Ms Gail Mulcair, the CEO of Speech Pathology Australia. And you will find a copy of her submission at tab 12 of tender bundle C and there are some annexions. Also joining Ms Mulcair on the panel is Stacey Baldack. She's the Professional Standards Manager for Speech Pathology Australia. And Amy Fitzpatrick, who is the Senior Advisor Disability for Speech Pathology Australia. This panel will focus on propositions 1, 2 and 5. Now, as at the 1st of January this year, there are 9,538 certified practising speech pathologists in Australia. Speech pathologists are university-trained allied health professionals with expert knowledge and skills to provide clinical services, consultation, education, prevention, advocacy and research for communication and swallowing. Speech pathologists work across, across the lifespan with infants, children, adolescents, adults and the elderly. Speech pathology is a self-regulated health profession with Speech Pathology Australia acting as the self-regulatory body. Quality and safety of speech pathology practice is regulated for members with requiring, requirements mirroring those required of registered professions which fall under the National Registration and Accreditation Scheme. Speech Pathology Australia certifies the status of speech pathologists through a certified practising speech pathologist membership of the association. Speech Pathology Australia accredits 26 university entry-level training courses for speech pathologists in Australia. And you have a copy of those universities in your materials. Speech pathology also manages the formal complaints process for the profession and can, if necessary, place sanctions on the practice of any member who demonstrates that he or she has contravened the association's code of ethics. Now, before I ask some questions of the panelists, may I remind the commissioners of evidence that you heard in February last year at public hearing 4? And you'll recall Ms Jo Abbe gave evidence in relation to her two sons who live with autism. She told you about her experience with navigating the health system and her experiences trying to find treatment and care for her sons, which included general practitioners, paediatricians, psychologists, speech pathologists and occupational therapists. She shared her experiences of her interactions with speech pathologists and psychologists. And one issue that she identified was the significant cost for her and her family. You will recall her evidence is exhibit 4.7 from public hearing 4. And one of the issues she wanted to speak about was the lack of coordinated care and her battles for coordinating the care and communication between practitioners. And I'll just go to play a short video of the final closing remarks that Ms Abbe made when she gave her evidence last year. Commissions, please.
Right, so I'm going to ask you, just in closing your evidence, thank you very much for coming to give your evidence today, to just read the final three paragraphs of your statement. So that starts at... So that starts at page twenty-four, paragraph one hundred and sixteen, if you want to read those final three paragraphs.
Okay, so I have to be a doctor, a psychologist, a psychiatrist and a nurse to both of my boys. There aren't enough good practitioners who are affordable and available to help me with my sons. I feel like their human rights are being violated every day. They exist. We live in a society where everyone who exists should get what they need, but they don't. I'm reminded all the time that there are kids with more severe autism and severe mental illness, but you can't compare hardship. Sometimes all I can see is that my boys have no hope of having a good life. And no matter what I do, I can't make that happen because no one's helping me. I'm an educated, media-savvy woman of resources and my kids are still not okay. When I do get help, it's patchy and so I don't have any trust. I don't trust the healthcare sector. I don't know if they're trained or not, but I'm tired of trying to figure it out. I can't fix the world. I'm too busy just trying to raise my boys.
Miss Abbey, thank you very much for giving. Cut off at giving her evidence. So Commissioners, can I now introduce the panel members? And Miss Mulcair, may I start with you? I can see you at the top of the screen. You are the CEO of Speech Pathology Australia. And you are a speech pathologist by training, is that right?
That's correct. Thank you, Council, and thank you to Commissioners for the opportunity to present. Yes, I'm the Chief Executive Officer, Speech Pathology Australia. I've been in that role since two thousand and four. And I originally trained as a speech pathologist and worked for many years as a speech pathologist in the area of adult rehabilitation. Seeing people who had head injury and following head injury and stroke had communication and cognitive and swallowing difficulties.
And in your role as CEO of Speech Pathology Australia, what are your responsibilities?
My main responsibilities are providing governance support to our Board of Directors, ensuring the implementation of our strategic plan and leading policy and government relations activities, as well as providing oversight to the general financial management and operations of the association. Excuse me. And as you've said, Council, some of the core functions of the association include setting the clinical and ethical standards for the profession, accrediting university training programmes and supporting members' practice through clinical guidelines and continuing professional development.
Thank you. Can I turn now to you, Amy Fitzpatrick? I can see you on the screen. You're the Senior Advisor Disability for Speech Pathology Australia. And this is a unique role, is it not? There's not another allied health professional group that has a senior advisor disability. So could you tell us a little bit about your background and your role as an advisor with a specific focus on disability?
Good morning, Council. Good morning, everybody. So my role at the association is to have a particular focus on disability. So that might be working with the professional education team to look at the needs in disability for our members, in what training and professional development they might need. Might be in working in writing submissions to the Royal Commission around healthcare or restrictive practices. And I'm sure you've received many submissions from us recently. It might be in meeting with other peak bodies to talk about similar issues that we might be experiencing across the sector or meeting with representatives from the NDIS to talk about themes such as thin markets or difficulties that providers might be facing in the market. We might, I might be attending other meetings to talk about themes such as what might be next for students in disability placements. Sometimes I might meet with providers at hospitals about concepts such as disability liaison officers and how that might impact on communication access for people with disabilities. So it's a very rewarding and far-reaching role, I would say. But for me, it's about how we might be embedding people with disability into every part of the community and how people with disability can get the services they need in every aspect of their life. So that anywhere you go in the community, a person with disability is accessing the services from a speech pathologist and from other allied health professionals in everyday life.
And your own background is, you are a trained speech pathologist, is that right?
That's right. So at the moment, I'm undertaking further study as well in health management and psychology. But I was trained as a speech pathologist graduating in two thousand and three, yes. And my background is in working predominantly in paediatrics. So zero to eighteen in children who have developmental disabilities. So mostly children with autism, children with syndromes such as Down syndrome or other developmental disabilities such as cerebral palsy and anyone who has a need for speech pathology services.
Commissioner Galbally asked a question earlier this morning of Miss Hewitt about whether any members of the advisory group or committee have lived experience of disability. You have lived experience of disability?
I do, yes. And I was just speaking with Brumwen Reed about that. And I was, I was wondering if that would come up because she asked me about a story that still haunts me. And I'm trying to not become emotional, but it's really difficult when you play videos like the one that you were just playing. But I'll, I'll try to contain myself. But I, I have a genetic syndrome that means that my mobility and my function is impaired. And my daughter also has the same genetic syndrome. So I wasn't aware of that condition until I had my daughter and some of the complications of that became apparent. So then I was diagnosed with that disability and she also has that disability. So we both have complicated healthcare needs and both NDIS participants. But that gave me the opportunity to bring that passion and desire to see change to this role, which has been a real, a really lovely opportunity. So I'm very passionate about that. But it has definitely been a whirlwind. Yes.
And you participated in the National Roadmap Meeting to look at issues around curriculum and education on the nineteenth of November last year.
That's right, yes.
So I'm going to ask you some questions about that, that process shortly. Stacey Baldack, can I turn to you? You're the Professional Standards Manager for Speech Pathology Australia. And your role is directly concerned with accreditation standards and and professional standards. Can you tell us about your background and your role, particularly in relation to the development and the implementation of accreditation standards?
Sure. Well, good morning, everyone. My background is as a speech pathologist and I've worked across the lifespan throughout my career, primarily in neurological rehabilitation and then for a short period in community health. I've spent considerable time in my career within higher education and looking at accreditation and competency frameworks and adult education principles. In terms of my role with the professional standards, so in two thousand and eighteen, Speech Pathology Australia undertook an initiative to review our standards. And we developed and launched in two thousand and twenty the professional standards for speech pathologists in Australia. And that document pertains to all practicing speech pathologists at any time during points in their career. And the the next process or the implementation of this is actually looking at what will be the actual required knowledge, skills and attributes and competencies that will be requiring at an undergraduate level. So we previously had a foundation document that highlighted our knowledge, skills, attributes and had competencies and measures against that. And now we're undertaking a large strategic project which involves consultation with a range of stakeholders in terms of then now looking at how that will actually be applied within the university context, how we will actually measure that and how do we ensure that our graduates meet our standards going forward?
Now, I've asked you to consider all of the propositions, but this morning we're going to focus on three of the propositions. And the Commissioners have got the very detailed response provided by Speech Pathology Australia as part of their documents, which will be the evidence in this hearing. So can I start with proposition one, which is the overarching competency framework? And Miss Mulcair, can I start with you? Is there anything that is now presently in place for Speech Pathology Australia that addresses competency in the context of a framework? Turn off my mute button. As Stacey has outlined, we have a very detailed set of professional standards which are embedded in the expectations in terms of speech pathology training programmes. Perhaps just to answer that, it might be useful if I give a bit more background around communication difficulties and the relationship of those with cognitive disabilities. So, and this may be very familiar to everyone, but in terms of communication needs or difficulties, they can arise from a range of conditions that may be present from birth, for example, Down syndrome or autism spectrum disorder. They can emerge during early childhood, for example, stuttering or developmental language disorder. Or during adult years, for example, traumatic brain injury, stroke, head and neck cancers and neurodegenerative disorders such as motor neurone disease. Or can be present in the elderly such as dementia, Alzheimer's and Parkinson's disease. Communication needs can arise due to difficulties with speech-producing spoken language, understanding or using language, voice, fluency, stuttering and pragmatics, which is the social use of language, or a combination of these areas, with all of these areas having a relationship with cognitive abilities. So this in turn requires that the undergraduate training of speech pathologists incorporates a sound understanding of cognitive skills which support communication and swallowing. So it's intrinsic in the training that speech pathologists have. And when speech pathologists refer to cognitive disability, this may relate from a developmental condition, for example, intellectual disability, or an acquired condition, for example, dementia or brain impairment following a traumatic head injury. Cognitive abilities and communication are intrinsically linked with disorders of cognition such as attention, memory, executive functioning such as thinking and problem solving, all required for effective communication. And also additionally contribute to a person being able to eat and drink safely. In the context of this inquiry, we do acknowledge that cognitive disability is more usually referring to people with intellectual disability. But we would propose that cognitive disability, as I've indicated, is intrinsic to all aspects of communication across the whole lifespan. And the nature of communication and swallowing difficulties exposes individuals to a higher potential for abuse, neglect and mistreatment, but also affects their ability to voice their concerns, to self-advocate and disclose or report harm done to them by another person. So it's very, very well-aligned with the remit of this inquiry. To answer your question, to come back to your question, from the point of view of a specific framework, I will defer to Stacey to answer that in a bit more detail. But there's not a framework in terms of cognitive disability competency per se, but it is embedded in the training programme. It's embedded in the expectations of our speech pathology training programmes that they equip students and prepare them to be ready for practice across the whole areas of communication and swallowing difficulties, which, as I've said, is intrinsic to or requires that cognitive abilities are considered in all contexts. Miss Baldack, do you want to add anything in terms of the work you do at Speech Pathology Australia on the accreditation standards and professional standards generally?
Sure. I guess just to put into context, our accreditation process looks at outcomes or outputs. So I'm very mindful that accreditation models might look at inputs in terms of what are, what is, what are the undergraduates actually being taught and looking at specifics with regards to content and references. And then there are output models which are looking at what are the, what are the capabilities or the competencies that the graduates can actually demonstrate? So the Speech Pathology Australia model has a focus on inputs when it's relevant to quality outputs. But we primarily assess a university looking at their high-level assessments and looking at the outcomes and capabilities of students. In saying that?
Just there, does any of that assessment also look at whether or not the students undertake clinical placements and have practical training?
Yes, yes. So it's, the onus is on the university to demonstrate to Speech Pathology Australia how they prepare their graduates and how they can provide evidence of their competencies. And that's a combination of clinical placement experiences and robust, rigorous assessments, similar to OSCEs or VIVS. And they're usually at a, what we call at an entry level, which is an integrated holistic assessment. So we're not just looking for assessments of a skill or a task. We're looking at how they actually apply those skills and tasks in a holistic manner. And to do that, the students typically have to show demonstration of principles of the international classification of ICF. And so within that, they're having to report in terms of how they appreciate and understand a person's needs and their goals and understands how cognitive abilities will impact on their ability to undertake assessment, therapy or engage with carers. So within our specific accreditation guidelines, it clearly indicates universities must report and show evidence of how their graduates are able to build in their understanding of development and cognitive abilities across the lifespan for all of their clients. So it's not pulled out in pieces. It's actually, in every interaction, in every assessment, there must be an application of graduates being able to demonstrate how they've understood the client's needs from a cognitive perspective and how they've built that into their assessment or therapy or whatever the assessment task involved.
So is the view of Speech Pathology Australia that you are supportive of a competency framework?
We're definitely supportive in principle of a competency framework. Currently, our process is such that it is integrated through our accreditation requirements. And I guess we just have some, we feel a competency framework will help guide, give some guidance to universities, guidance to speech pathologists, guidance to other professionals. I guess it's about how it will be implemented. And I, I say that in terms of accreditation processes are different across the health professions. So if you have a health profession that looks at an input-based model and is just looking at what goes into the curriculum with respect to knowledge, then you're not necessarily then resulting in change in behaviour and capabilities. So you would hope that a competency framework is developed so that you're looking at knowledge, skills, but you're also looking at capabilities, values and beliefs within that.
Can I ask you, because you've used both competency and capability? And, and sometimes those expressions seem to be interchangeable, but at other times, they're looking at quite specific, different issues. And you and Miss Fitzpatrick have drawn to the Royal Commission's attention the Allied Health Capability Framework Disability and Complex Support Needs, recently issued by the State of Victoria. Commissioners, you have a copy of this document behind tab nine in the hearing bundle for today. And I don't want to take you through the whole of that document, but could I ask either Miss Fitzpatrick or Miss Baldack, do you want to comment on the issues that arise around capability and the extent to which that sits with a competency framework? And any experience that you've had with the development of the Victorian Allied Health Capability Framework?
I think Amy would need to speak to the development of the framework. But I guess in terms of when I refer to competency in the context of our accreditation, we're referring to measurable, observable behaviours. And typically, capabilities is something that is still growing and developing. So you might have skills and knowledge in a certain area, but you need to keep improving your skills and knowledge because situations change. And that, that might be with respect to. And that, that might be with respect to your understanding how to respond to cognitive abilities or to respond to Aboriginal Torres Strait Island cultures. So competencies in this context, in terms of accreditation refers to measurable observable events with, you know, key criteria that you can tick off against.
Ms Fitzpatrick?
I think Gail and Stacey can confirm this, but from my point of view, for speech pathologists particularly, it's our position that every speech pathologist, when they graduate, they are competent and capable to work with every person with a cognitive disability. And that's something that we feel very strongly about. But we would like them to keep demonstrating their capability over time by continuing their professional development and continuing to have supervision in place. So that's what we like to see when they're demonstrating their certified status. So when we're looking at something like the Allied Health Capability Framework that you have a copy of, we really like this kind of framework because it gives that, you know, an additional kind of training package that can be used in that interdisciplinary practice so that you can work together collaboratively as a team. And it gives you that resource that you can take as part of your professional education that really shows you the capabilities that you might not have learnt in university because there are different university programs, but it's something that's agreed upon for that extra education. So this is something that I think is a really good resource that the commission could have a look at to see the kind of, the kind of skills that we're saying would be over and above what we're teaching at a university level, but the kind of ideas that we would like to see intrinsic in what people with disability would like to experience in a healthcare setting. So that's the kind of example of something that's common to all of the healthcare professionals working with people with disability. But wouldn't necessarily need to be embedded in that undergraduate level. So I think that that's just an example of something that has been developed already. That would be a good example of what could work well.
And if I could perhaps add something, council, if that's okay?
Of course.
That, as we've said, we certainly have a very strong agreement in principle to a cognitive framework, a competency framework for in the area of cognitive disability. Whether that suits our profession, given as we've said, we believe that there is a very sound and robust, robust knowledge of communication and cognitive disability intrinsic to the work that speech pathologists do. But that may not be the case for all health professions. And so we would say that it is really essential that all health professionals have an understanding of working with people with cognitive disability, understand their specific needs and have the strategies and the capability to be able to engage people with cognitive disability in decision making around their healthcare and in being able to fully participate in determining their healthcare needs. So for other professions, we would see this as being, you know, very useful. For our own profession, we would see this as something that would be of additional benefit and potentially would contribute to the course, the curriculum design and content for speech pathology programs, but not necessarily be a specific competency framework that's needs to be part of our accreditation processes at undergraduate level. I think it will be useful to also explore the difference, the potential difference between what might be useful at undergraduate level versus what is useful for a postgraduate level in terms of that continuing professional development that all health professionals should be undertaking. And whether something of this nature actually sits well as some additional modules or additional training resources that are open to all health professionals to be able to undertake.
I wanted to turn now to proposition two because, and we might put that up on the screen. That is a proposition that calls for the active involvement of people with cognitive disability in the development and evaluation, the delivery of training and education. And I wanted to ask you, and whoever would like to take the question, let me know. But does speech pathology work in conjunction with people with cognitive disability in the development of the curriculum that it accredits? So accepting that the universities, of course, develop the curriculum for the undergraduate students. Does the role that you have in accrediting look at whether or not that development has occurred in conjunction with people with cognitive disability? And to what extent do cognitive, people with cognitive disability participate in the processes? Who wants to take that question?
It's Stacey here, probably should take this question. In terms of our accreditation process, we look for that the curricula is reviewed and has input from stakeholders. And they can include local community members, consumers of services and speech pathologists that might be working in their context. We do not have specifics though, with regards to that the curriculum review should include people with cognitive disability. It just has a broader stakeholder and consumers lens. We do have a requirement around university curricula is designed or in consultation with Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander peoples.
Is there a reason why there hasn't been a focus on people with cognitive disability being involved in the development or review of curriculum and then broader training?
There's no specific reason. Typically, the university accreditation, sorry, the university process for the development of a curriculum that is sort of monitored by TECSA, so the tertiary education. Forgetting the whole acronym then. So if a university was wanting to develop a curriculum, they need to follow the guidelines as per the university and TECSA, and that usually stipulates the range of people that need to be at the table for the development. And then the review process as well, TECSA often indicates who needs to be at the table with respect to the review. And typically it has sort of consumers or stakeholders, but it doesn't specify individuals with cognitive disability.
So individuals with cognitive disability may be picked up if they're consumers? Would that be the place?
Yes, they may be picked up.
But not specifically referred to as a particular cohort of consumers for whom there should be some consultation and some cooperation? Is that right?
No, that's right. So for Speech Pathology Australia's purposes only, for our university accreditation, we ask universities to demonstrate how they're engaging with Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander peoples. And so that's the only group that we specify that we are seeking input into their curriculum.
Do you accept that there would be value in also including people with cognitive disability as people with whom there should be consultation?
Definitely. And I can't recall every university context, but most universities try and build into their curricula opportunities to have access to the lived experience of speech pathology services. So it's not a specific requirement within our accreditation process. But given that the universities' programs are trying to ensure that students understand the impact of disability and communication needs, many of their assessments, many of their experiences are based on real life client information. And so that's typically what's embedded into their curriculum.
Ms Baldock, can I try to understand a little better than I do at the moment? The precise relationship between university curricula and your accreditation process? How does that work?
So universities are free to develop curricula based on current teaching processes or the pedagogy or the position of the university.
Yeah, I understand, they're autonomous, but I'm trying to understand where your accreditation process fits in.
Sure. So in terms of for graduates of a university to become eligible for speech pathology membership, they need to be accredited by Speech Pathology Australia. So our process commences when a university starts taking students and we accredit the course prior to the first cohort of graduates.
I understand, I understand, but I'm trying to ascertain what criteria you apply? If the universities are autonomous and you have no authority over them, what is it that you are doing to ensure that the accreditation process serves the purposes you are seeking to achieve?
So our foundation tool or document that the universities must demonstrate is our competency based occupational standards, often referred to CBOs. And so within our accreditation guidelines, the universities have to demonstrate how students meet the requirements within CBOs. And they do that via a portfolio of evidence demonstrating the clinical placements that students attend, the types of assessments and provide details on the assessment task, the assessment rubrics. And so we have a panel of academics that review that content to determine if the students are demonstrating the required competencies as per CBOs.
So in practice, this set of competencies is something that university courses have to adhere to because if they don't, their graduates won't be accredited or registered with your organisation.
That's correct.
Does it follow then that you do have the authority to do the sorts of things that Ms Eastman is putting to you in terms of the universities developing their curricula? And for example, in consultation with people with disability?
Yes, yes, we can make requirements in that respect.
So universities in practice are not quite as autonomous as all that?
No, they're probably autonomous in determining their pedagogy, but they are required to have certain inputs and indefinite outputs.
There's nothing unusual, I should say, about this. This is exactly what happens with law schools.
And it links in with the fact that Speech Pathology Australia is the regulating body for the profession. As we said earlier, with a self-regulating professional body for the profession. And our profession, Speech Pathology, is not covered under APRA. It's not a registered profession. And so as Ms Baldock has indicated, for a graduating speech pathologist to be able to become a certified practicing speech pathologist, they must have been successfully, they must be successfully graduated from a university program that we have accredited.
And one significance or one feature of significance, if a person is a registered speech pathologist with your organisation, is that there are certain entitlements as far as the medical benefit schedule is concerned. Can you just explain that briefly? What is the benefit to a registered speech pathologist in that respect?
So a certified practicing speech pathologist has met the required requirements in terms of their undergraduate training. And they have also, they must demonstrate on an ongoing basis that they meet our recency of practice as well as-
Sorry, I may not have made myself, sorry, I may not have made myself clear. I'm wanting to know what the benefit is to the registered speech pathologist in having an entitlement of some kind under the MBS? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, sorry. Yes, no, I understood your question. Sorry, I was leading to that. So there are many funding bodies, including Medicare's of the MBS schedule, including NDIS, including DVA, work cover schemes, TAC, who all require a speech pathologist to be a certified practicing speech pathologist. It's the way in which they can determine quality and appropriate qualifications and skills. So that is a benefit. And for people working, for speech pathologists working in private practice, it would be very difficult to be working in private practice if you were not a certified practicing speech pathologist because your clients would not be able to receive funding or rebates through those schemes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Can I briefly turn to proposition five, which is collaboration and a multidisciplinary approach? And proposition five addresses training and education for health professionals being something that should address the importance and skills necessary to work collaboratively with families, support people and advocates, professionals from various health and other social disciplines. We've partly touched on it. The first question I want to ask you is whether our description multidisciplinary is the correct or preferable way of describing the approach? I think Ms Fitzpatrick, you've got a view on whether multidisciplinary is the right expression?
Actually, that's Ms Baldock who wants to explain about that.
Okay.
That's all right. I appreciate that it's been written in with good intent in terms of people working together for the benefit of the client's needs. In terms of supporting collaboration into professional practice would be the preferred term for Speech Pathology Australia. And interprofessional practice is the terminology that the World Health Organisation also utilizes with respect to supporting collaboration for, you know, improving quality and client outcomes.
And I understand that in terms of an interprofessional practice and collaboration, this is something that Speech Pathology Australia strongly supports?
Definitely. And certainly interprofessional practice is one of our criteria in our accreditation requirements as well.
And is there any particular advice that you can give to the Royal Commission about how you go about achieving an effective interprofessional practice to support care and treat people with cognitive disability? That's a very large question to ask you to answer in less than five minutes.
Okay. So, you know, if you refer to the literature, interprofessional practice barriers come at system, organisational and individual levels. And so at the moment, health practitioners, the majority of them wish to work in an interprofessional way, but there are system barriers because funding models do not support or fund for collaboration and joint time. They're often funded just for your time with the client. So there's big system issues with funding. At an organisational level, there are challenges with respect to how teams are structured because of funding and how it's supported. And so funding often gets separated. But from an educational perspective, there are opportunities at an undergraduate level to build that into courses, but that requires collaboration across all the health disciplines. And that's not just in the academic context, there also needs to be collaboration for placements. So many students don't really realise the benefit of interprofessional practice until they're actually with the real clients in their practice placements, working with others. And so alignment is often a real challenge for clinical placements. The physiotherapists come in January, the occupational therapists come in February, or they come on different days. And they all have specific criteria that they need to tick off to get through the placement. But they need to all have a common goal of interprofessional practice. And there should be opportunities built in at the academic, in the university context, and then in the clinical placement context. Now, I am aware that health professions, accreditation councils, so the registered professions, they're collaborative of similar positions to mine, are currently trying to look at some key common interprofessional criteria or competencies to build into accreditation processes. And I'm also very mindful that the COAG review of accreditation systems also suggested that interprofessional practice should be built into accreditation processes. So there's an opportunity here for us to make significant change across all professions if there was a drive, a push to say, build it into undergraduate training. But it's supported in academic and clinical placement opportunities.
Where does the drive or push have to come from? Is it government? Is it universities? Is it the professional bodies?
I think it needs to be all because there is no point advocating at a university level. You must work in an interprofessional way. And then you go to a clinical placement or experience and they're only funded for multidisciplinary. If they cannot actually realise it and see it in practice, then it's very hard to then go forth and say, well, let's, let's model it. If you're not funded to do it, if you're just going, no, you go in there on your own. We want to have models where, you know, one or two professionals go in and see a person at one time. You know, reduce duplication of asking questions. You know, there needs to be trust built amongst professionals so that, you know, you can share information and know that it's accurate and that you can build upon that. So- and know that it's accurate and that you can build upon that. So it's a multi-level response.
Who should bear the responsibility of implementing the type of arrangement that you've just described?
Well, I think from a university perspective, we know this reflects best practice and this is what quality out, you know, to support quality outcomes. So universities should be saying, we want to provide an evidence-based curriculum, so they should be building it in. You know, many health providers are striving to provide interprofessional practice, but their barriers are often funding. Their barriers are funding for their practitioners, but also for their infrastructure. If you can't actually have teams that sit alongside each other or have opportunities to talk, there are barriers. But if the government was to drive, you know, change funding models to say, we want interprofessional practice models, not multidisciplinary models. And so we factor in opportunities for collaboration, team planning, you know, meeting with clients, determining joint needs, then that's going to facilitate a big shift in how we can service our clients.
Support that it definitely needs to be supported through the funding model. Separately, I'm involved in the Primary Health Reform Ten Year Plan Steering Group. And funding models is something that is being explored and considered in terms of how that will support equitable access to a wider range of allied health professionals. And interdisciplinary practices, as Stacey has described, needs to be supported by appropriate funding rather than the funding that we might have at the moment through the MDS, which is really a fee-for-service, single service with a single person funding arrangement.
Commissioners, this has been just really an introduction to the material provided by our witnesses from Speech Pathology Australia today. I've concluded the questions I need to ask. Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
So let me ask Commissioner Galbally first.
No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkinson.
You spoke, and I'm not quite sure who can answer this question, but you spoke about your capacity as an accrediting body to influence what happens in universities. Would it make a difference if your profession was registered? And what capacity does APRA have to influence what happens in universities for health practitioners that are registered?
I think our processes are very similar to the registered professions. In terms of our standards, we have mirrored the standards in terms of self-regulation on the standards that APRA sets for registered professions. I don't believe that being a registered profession would give us a different relationship with universities. There are different benefits of the profession being registered. But in terms of the accreditation process, I would argue that we are probably similar to the registered professions in the relationship between our accreditation processes and the university curriculum development. Stacey may have a view in terms of the relationship that she has with a number of the similar accrediting personnel of the registered professions.
And I think it's in terms of if we were registered, we would have greater access to being at the table when some decisions are made across different perspectives where we're often hear of events that are for registered professions to provide advice. And we're often going, can we come too? Which is a bit of a challenge or piggybacking or trying to get in on the scene. So I think there would be benefits about being at the table, but I don't think it would necessarily change our capacity to change our standards. I think we have probably a better window to change our standards, given that we are self-regulating.
Thank you.
How many universities have speech pathology courses?
At the moment, there's about twenty-six universities and more preparing courses as we speak.
Of the nine thousand odd accredited speech pathologists, are any left over from the time when there weren't speech pathology courses at universities?
No, they would all be appropriately qualified and meet our meet our requirements in terms of Australian-based qualifications. We also have a process for assessing people with overseas qualifications. And people with overseas qualifications again must be able to demonstrate that they meet our standards for practising in the Australian context.
And how do you deal with complaints against speech pathologists?
We have a Code of Ethics, which applies to all of our members. We have an ethics board and where we receive complaints, we have a very formal and documented process of investigating complaints. We would establish an investigation panel. And the panel would explore the complaints, both with the complainant and the respondent, and then consider the case and make recommendations to our board.
How many determinations would have been made by such a panel over the last twelve months, for example?
I would have to take that on notice, but it would probably be around, I'm just going to guess.
That's fine.
It would be about, it would be about twelve per annum, but there has been some increase in recent years. But that's formal complaints. We do certainly consider any queries that we receive from the public or from other speech pathologists that are expressing concern around the practice of a speech pathologist. And we have a process for exploring that particular concern. So there are a number of informal queries that don't reach a formal complaint process. But I will take that on notice and get back to you with the formal data.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to give Ms Fitzpatrick an opportunity to tell the Commissioners what you would like to see implemented in order to improve the position, if it needs improving, of the relationship between speech pathologists and people with cognitive disability.
Thank you. I was wondering if I would get the chance to give you my bucket list?
Now's the chance.
Absolutely. Thank you. I was just thinking while Ms Beldak was speaking about an example in practical terms, because I'm a very practical person, of what it would look like. And I was thinking, wouldn't it be lovely if, for example, an occupational therapist, while they were in university, was able to learn what a pain scale is or what a visual support is and what a communication device is and how that would look when one of their clients or a person with disability is in hospital and learn how to do that and how to work with a speech pathologist so that when they graduate as an occupational therapist or a psychologist, they know already what it is like to work with someone who is non-speaking so that when they are working in a hospital already as a new graduate, they don't need to learn that from a speech pathologist or go to Dr Google or their professional association because they already have those skills. So I was just thinking that would be lovely. And I was thinking as well, so a story from my own life is that when I go to hospital, which is very often, as I'm packing my bag, I pack my cheat sheet of what my syndrome is, I prepare which vein I know that I'm going to say is the best vein to put to draw blood from and put the catheter in, sorry, the cannula in. I know how to say this is where my, what my blood pressure will be. So this is when you need to worry and this is when you don't. And I need to prepare that because I know I'll be tired because of fasting. And I was just thinking, imagine if somebody who's non-speaking and uses a communication device or somebody, an autistic person who needs a sensory room that's quite calm because they have an aversion to bright lights or noises. Imagine if they were able to go to hospital by themselves without a support worker or without their family member or partner because they've been able to be prepared for that experience before going to hospital because they're able to call and say, this is what I need. Imagine if they were able to go to hospital by themselves in a public hospital because there's a disability liaison officer or there's a speech pathologist who's working with them. And they can write that up on their communication device or in easy English beforehand, and they can go by themselves because they have their choice and control. You know, as a participating person in society. And that's just what I would like to see because that's, there's enough funding through the NDIS or through the health system for the person's speech pathologist to speak to a speech pathologist or a disability liaison officer in the community or the GP has worked with the person through the Medicare system because Medicare system has adequate allied health services and time for the GP to spend time coaching that person to ask for what they need. They can go to hospital, have that procedure. And the person's family is at home because a person with disability can go to the hospital by themselves. So I know that's utopia, but to me that sounds doable. And if that can be done, then I'm out of a job and I can stay home with my daughter. So that would be wonderful. And I just think that that shouldn't really be a dream because that would just be lovely. And then speech pathologists don't have to stay up all night writing these kind of plans for people with disability to you know, access the healthcare that they need because they're getting paid to do it during work time. So yeah, that's what I'd like to say, I guess.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms Fitzpatrick. Just before we conclude, I'll ask Mr Costello, Ms Vines or Ms McMillan if they have any questions to ask of the panel? If not, then thank you very much to each of you, Ms Mulcair, Ms Beldak and Ms Fitzpatrick for coming to the Commission, giving evidence. We appreciate your assistance very much. Thank you. Thank you for the session.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioners. We had a little bit of slippage. We knew today would be a tight day, but if we could adjourn now just for a brief morning tea of fifteen minutes?
Sure. We shall resume at eleven thirty Sydney time, ten thirty Brisbane time.
Thank you. The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next panel is the Pharmacy Panel and we'll have four members of the panel and I'll introduce them shortly. I want to take the Commissioners back to some evidence that you heard at Public Hearing Six. And you may recall Dr Manya Angli, who gave evidence at that hearing. She's a consultant pharmacist and part of her work is to conduct home medicine reviews and deliver quality use of medical and residential management reviews. She told you at Public Hearing Six this. Both the community and consultant pharmacists also have an important role in promoting the appropriate use of psychotropic medication, particularly where the monitoring and management of medicines by prescribing practitioners fall short. She said services provided for individuals and families impacted by intellectual disability sit across a broad range of sectors, including but not limited to health, education, disability services and the parent consumer sectors. She said quality use of medicines doesn't only fall in the realm of the health sector, especially with respect to quality use of psychotropics, which are often used to manage behaviour in the home, school or care settings. She said it is vital that each sector is recognised for their unique contribution, but also that they work together to ensure the best outcome for those impacted. Pharmacists can play a key role in gathering medication-related information and the highly complex psychosocial issues that surround medication use. Commissioners, you'll also recall the evidence presented at Public Hearing Six by Ms Paula McGowan. She's Oliver's mother. Oliver died when he was eighteen years old in November twenty sixteen. Oliver had been treated at several hospitals for seizures. Paula McGowan and her husband firmly believe that if Oliver had not had the labels autism and intellectual disability attached to him, he would not have been prescribed certain psychotropic medications. And the catastrophic impact on him and his family would not have occurred. Commissioners, you'll recall that Oliver had an adverse reaction to I knew I was going to get this wrong, olanzapine and developed MNMS. Ms McGowan took a petition to the UK Parliament demanding that health professionals have better training on intellectual disability and autism. And she wanted the training to be mandatory across all health and social care professionals. She was successful in that endeavour and had, this work has resulted in the introduction of the Oliver McGowan Mandatory Training and Learning Disability and Autism Courses for Health and Social Care Staff. You'll also recall that she told you about the organisation STOMP, which is an advocacy group that started in the UK in twenty sixteen to stop the overuse of psychotropic medication to manage behaviour of people with learning disabilities. I want to play a short part of Paula McGowan's evidence that she gave at Public Hearing Six.
I am seeing children who, in my opinion, are over-medicated. The children's reactions are very slow. They appear disengaged and are not always to interact with their peers. There are attitudinal problems with respect to the use of medication and many people do not seem to be aware of alternatives, such as behaviour support or management techniques. When I have talked to members of the public in Australia about this issue, particularly people from all the generations, they don't seem to know what to do other than to medicate people who have what they perceive to be behaviours that challenge. Greater awareness can highlight the inequalities in health and social care that people with intellectual disability and autism face in Australia. Awareness will also tell us, help to tell us, just how many people are dying premature and preventable deaths. It is important that health professionals, social care and disability support workers all have appropriate training in assisting people with an intellectual disability and autism. Australia should also have standardised mandatory training in relation to these issues. As I have stated above, when everybody has been given the same training, this allows for everyone to be evaluated, assessed and monitored in respect to this issue. I believe the Oliver McGowan Mandatory Training in Learning Disability and Autism could and should be adopted here in Australia to support clinicians in gaining understanding of alternatives to psychotropic medications, of how to make reasonable adjustments and of appropriate behaviour management. Communication with people with intellectual disability and their families about their health and treatment is very important. Some of the health professionals who treated my son did not properly listen to our or our son's views regarding the use of psychotropic medication. It is vital that the patient is kept at the heart of all decision-making, giving them an equal say in their care, their care and treatment that belongs to them. Health practitioners who are supporting and treating people who have a learning disability and/or autism should A, ask people with a learning disability, autism or both, their families and carers for their opinions and concerns about their treatment. Listen, listen to all involved and show respect for those opinions and concerns. And C, do something about it and work in partnership with them. They should treat all patients in a way that they would wish to be treated themselves with respect and dignity. They must remember that the care that they are giving should always be in partnership with the patient and where appropriate with their families and carers. They must also understand how to make reasonable adjustments and how to modify their language. They must also understand how to make reasonable adjustments and how to modify their language and communication. They must ensure that their body language is non-threatening, not invading the space of the patient with intellectual disability, not standing over them. They must be careful not to use a lot of medical jargon. They need to be aware that their patients may need time to process what is being said and they need information to be repeated. This does not mean talking to patients as though they are children. In conclusion, ultimately, however, there must be government support and commitment to addressing these problems. The government must start taking these issues seriously from start to finish. I have observed that Australia is a very proud country, which says that it treats its citizens with fairness. However, I don't think this is always the case where people with intellectual disability and or autism are concerned. The work of researchers like Professor Julian Trolle show that they are not always able to have equal health outcomes as the rest of the general public. It is not fair or right that they are dying younger than their peers. It is not fair that professionals, clinicians are not given the education and skills required to help them enable patients with intellectual disability and autism to have better healthcare outcomes.
Uh, Commissioners, this panel will uh and will try in the time available cover propositions one, three, five and eleven. Can I start by introducing the members of the panel? Professor Abernathy, may I start with you? You are Bruce Abernathy. And you are the Executive Dean of the Faculty of Health and Behavioral Sciences at the University of Queensland. And you provided the Royal Commission with a statement that sets out the undergraduate courses for pharmacy, psychology and speech pathology offered at the University of Queensland.
Uh, can we, sorry, can, sorry to interrupt Professor Abernathy, but I'm not sure we're hearing you properly. Could you give us a complete sentence and then we'll be able to see whether we hear, whether we can follow you?
Yeah, sure. So I'm Bruce Abernathy. I'm the Executive Dean of the Faculty of Health and Behavioral Sciences at the University of Queensland. And pharmacy is one of six schools um within our faculty.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Uh, so the the Commissioners have got the benefit of a very comprehensive statement, including the tables that set out the content concerning people with cognitive disability in each of the courses that you've described. But could I just ask in summary, from the perspective of the University of Queensland, is priority given to the students' learning and understanding about the importance of healthcare for people with cognitive disability? And if so, how is that done?
Um, it it's certainly an important consideration in our, in each of the curricula. If you, if you're talking about pharmacy in particular, perhaps I can highlight that by way of example, where um, you know, increasingly we're wanting to have a, an approach which is very much a person centred approach to the, to delivery of of programmes. And that's best exemplified by having case studies, hear, hearing the, the, you know, the intimate uh stories of people who have, who are living with intellectual disability and know of their families. So that things like medication prescription can be put in an appropriate context and the the same kind of issues would apply if we're talking about an allied health programme or a psychology programme.
I'll come back to you shortly when we delve into proposition one, the competency framework. But can I introduce the other members of the panel? Ms. Clark, may I start with you? You're the Chief Executive Officer of the Australian Pharmacy Council. Now, can you tell the Royal Commission, what is the pharmacy, Australian Pharmacy Council and what are your particular responsibilities?
Thank you. The Australian Pharmacy Council is the accreditation authority for pharmacy education in Australia. We work within the national accreditation and um registration scheme. And my responsibilities are to ensure that we undertake our accreditation functions of health professions programmes in pharmacy and assessment of pharmacists to the standards that are expected of the community for the safe and socially accountable care of people in Australia.
And uh to the, you've also provided the Royal Commission with a detailed statement. To what extent does the uh care of people with cognitive disability form part of your work and the responsibilities of the Australian Pharmacy Council?
So our accreditation standards are the platform and the base standards that education is set against in Australia. And in the most recent review, we have used what we've called a social accountability framework, which requires our education providers to ensure that person centred care for people of all types and everyone in Australia is provided for our pharmacists. And specifically around different cultures, people with different backgrounds and including those with disabilities. That's, that's our core set of standards, which is in essence a flaw that an education provider cannot fall below when they are applying for accreditation.
And you've set out that the criterion in your statement and it refers to disability generally, but not cognitive disability specifically. Is that right?
That's correct.
Now, there are eighteen universities in Australia and New Zealand uh who have been accredited to uh provide courses in pharmacy. Is that right?
That's correct. Eighteen in Australia and two in New Zealand.
Okay, so twenty altogether. We include two in New Zealand. All right. I'll come back to you in a moment also on proposition one. Uh, Mr. Martin, can I turn to you? Let me just turn up your statement. So you are the CEO of the Australian Association of Consultant Pharmacy. Now, what is the A A C P and how is that different to the Pharmacy Council? And then I'll come to Mr. Simmons about the board. I just want to be very clear about what your respective roles and functions are.
Sure. We have a singular focus on pharmacists interested in conducting medication reviews under the Community Pharmacy Agreement. A pharmacist would come to ask for the credential that would successfully completed but allow them to um seek funding for reviews under the community pharmacy process. Um, we have a, that's a very singular role, I suppose I would put it that way, um, a much smaller role than A P C. Um, so the pharmacist, it's a, it's an online programme. Pharmacists are free to enter and leave at their own will. Um, the assessment is based on a number of elements, based on knowledge and um um conducting case studies, fictional case studies to respond to a competency framework assessment we've created.
So, so these would be pharmacists such as Dr. Angli, who may undertake a review of medication that a particular person has been prescribed and perhaps using over a period of time. And the review is to assess the efficacy of the medications. Is that right?
Correct, yes. They look, they look for in, in information from a doctor, from other, and from the person themselves on how the medications are um working, what issues are arising, provide a report back to the referring G P um for them to consider what to do next for the particular person involved.
And at public hearing six that the Royal Commission convened last year, the focus was on the use of psychotropic medication and the regulatory framework around the use of psychotropic medication. The Commissioners haven't issued a hearing report yet, but the Commissioners did hear evidence of um of often long term and extensive use of psychotropic medications to manage what was described as behaviours of concern or challenging behaviours. And this often involves people with cognitive disability. So against that background, can you tell the Royal Commission to what extent does the accreditation process that you have responsibility for require anyone seeking the credentials or accreditation to have a very deep knowledge and understanding of cognitive disability?
Okay, the um, the process um means that the accredited pharmacist needs to be aware of medications, how they respond, how they react to for individuals, long term use. Um, they also need to look at the, excuse me, look at what's happening for the patient, what brother, what, how is the patient responding to their medication? And why has it been given? Is there a need for it to be given? Um, all that becomes part of the report back to the G P um in aged care facilities, which is probably the, the more common area for this to be, be, be looked at. Um, they also work with the aged care staff in, in seeking out what, why the person has been prescribed this medicine. Um, the doctor provides information as well and that creates the report back, but the, the pharmacist um is looking at the, the need for the medication, um, what, what behaviours were required the medication to be started in the first place, are they still necessary? The competency framework we use is designed to get the pharmacist to question why medicines have been given and question the ongoing need for that medicine. Um, should, should it continue? Is it appropriate? Is it dose appropriate? What modifications should be, should be undertaken or recommended, should be undertaken uh for that person to get the most benefit from their medicine?
And Mr. Simmons, can I uh turn to you? You're Brett Simmons and you're the Chair of the Pharmacy Board of Australia.
So I am. Thank you.
And can you tell the Royal Commission what the role of the pharmacy board is?
Certainly. Thank you, Council. It's the role of the pharmacy board is to register suitably qualified and competent pharmacists. We also develop registration standards, codes and guidelines in accordance with national law. We approve accreditation uh standards that are developed by uh Australian Pharmacy Council. And we also approve education accredited programmes of study. We oversee the assessment of overseas trained applicants for registration. And we also make regulatory decisions about individual registered health practitioners. Now, that might be in concern of the suitability for registration or it could be a result of a notification or complaints and we look at whether we need to take regulatory action around that particular practitioner. I think that basically covers things, Council. Thank you.
Uh, now, according to the statistics uh published by the board, uh as at December last year, there are thirty five thousand registered pharmacists in Australia. So I've taken that from your data.
Yes, that's really probably correct, yes.
And um, and the majority of registered pharmacists are women.
Yes, they are. It's about, I think, about sixty five percent, thirty five percent at this stage.
And I think uh Australians uh will be very familiar with pharmacists. They're part of everybody's life at different points in time. And it's likely that pharmacists in a range of areas are going to have interaction with people with disability, but also people with cognitive disability during the course of their practice and operating their businesses as pharmacists. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would, Council, yes.
So there are going to be areas where particular pharmacists are, develop particular speciality or expertise, for example, in the home medication reviews areas. But for the everyday pharmacists, you'd agree, wouldn't you, that it's important for pharmacists to have a working knowledge of the care and treatment and delivery of health services for people with cognitive disability?
Yes, I do. I agree. They would come across patients like this all the time in practice. Yes.
So I, I want to open up uh on proposition one, which is the competency framework and has a number of elements to it. Professor Abernathy, can I start with you from a university perspective and your expectations of graduates completing pharmacy? But I know you've also touched on speech pathology and psychology. What is the uh expectation of a graduate from the University of Queensland with respect to competency? And in that context, do you support proposition one in relation to the development of a competency framework?
Um, thank you, Council. Uh, perhaps if I can answer the, the latter question first, which is uh we would certainly support the framework. There would be an expectation that graduates coming out of the programme would have the skill set and the expertise, but most importantly, I guess, the soft skills, the the empathy, the understanding, the ability to see things from someone else's perspective that would allow them to function effectively in providing healthcare support to people with cognitive disability and a whole range of, of um, of other diverse conditions. In the, in relation to the proposition itself, I think uh in the, in the, in the framework, there's very little in there that we would disagree with or find objection to. Perhaps the only comment that I, I could make would be in relation to one point four. Um, and I know it says guidance, uh but the issue of guidance around appropriate modes of teaching. I think we, we would be certainly accepting of that as long as it wasn't prescriptive. You know, one of the, the things that I think is important in any accreditation framework is sufficient room for local innovation rather than uh necessarily prescription about teaching modes. So as long as it was guidance, I think all the other things around the expected outcomes, the frameworks, of course, the people who can be consulted on this all makes enormous sense from an educational point of view.
Can I, can I take up the, the idea of it not being prescriptive? And how does that um sit with what the Royal Commission's heard about crowded curricula? And that where uh there is a crowded curricula, compromises have to be made and matters have to be dropped off. If there's not a prescription about teaching methods and the inclusion of cognitive disability, is there a risk that in pharmacy or speech pathology or psychology that the crowded curriculum uh might be at the expense of um examining with the students uh appropriate healthcare delivery for people with cognitive disability?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a fair question. We'd always, of course, be assessed by uh A P C and others in terms of how well we met the outcomes rather than necessarily the specific means by which that was achieved. Um, and so perhaps the pressure on curricula is very real. Um, there's, there's of course a whole lot of core competencies that are required and all, and year on year, almost a, a layering of additional expectations. So how you fit those in is, is, is an important challenge for an educational institution. Um. One option which uh on the surface seems attractive is that you manage to find space for a dedicated unit, say in this case on, on um prescribing for, for uh people with cognitive disability. The reality is that's really difficult to do in amongst the whole spectrum of things that has to be satisfied in a, in a programme. Instead, what you would hope to do is embed throughout the curriculum rather than in an isolated unit in one year. Plenty of case studies, plenty of examples, plenty of appearances from people with cognitive disabilities and, and their immediate uh family. That would enrich that experience for students on the way through. So there are many ways to deal with a crowded curriculum. The least favoured one is just adding another uh uh course to, to already heavily prescribed uh curriculum. A much better way, both pedagogically and practically, is to embed those experiences uh throughout the course of study. It's more likely then that those experiences and the skills that are acquired that way will also then persevere into the uh post-registration experience of, of graduates.
Ms. Clark, can I turn to you? Um, do you have a view on proposition one and and any comment you would like to make about from uh the perspective of accrediting university courses? Do you hear about the crowded curriculum?
Um, yes, Council, I do. Um, and I think this is, um, we don't dismiss that as a, as a reality. Um, with regards to proposition one and what our views would be is that we would have very similar views to that of Professor Abernathy. That the, the discussion around a competency framework and the development of a competency framework. That the the discussion around a competency framework and the development of a competency framework could definitely be an appropriate mechanism for increasing the the visibility of this population within our education programs and co-designing education with people with cognitive disability and their families and carers. I think, but similarly to Professor Abernathy, with regards to the actual pedagogy and the delivery methods. We work on an outcomes-based framework and so we are somewhat reluctant to prescribe particular ways of teaching and learning. And what has been presented from the U Q example here demonstrates to us the level that we would be looking for from accreditation perspective.
Mr Simmons, do you have any views on Proposition One?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Council. Look, the pharmacy board would be supportive of a proposal to develop a competency framework. And the board would also be keen to be involved with the development of such a proposal as well. I think it should be noted that pharmacy profession has a national competency standards framework for pharmacists in Australia. And that helps determine the competencies required for an individual to practise as a pharmacist. But alongside that, there are several other cross-professional frameworks that exist for particular practice areas. And I would see a proposal like this sitting in that space. For example, I could give you would be around the National Prescribing Service Prescribing Competencies Framework. That's a cross-professional framework for all health professionals who prescribe medicines. And it gives the ability for professions to then use that when, for instance, in the board situation, utilizing, developing registration standards and guidance for the profession. And and I think it also provides the opportunity for education providers and training organisations to be guided in what sort of competencies is required in certain areas of practice. So yes, the board would be supportive of that proposal.
Would the the issues around competency inform such matters as whether a pharmacist meets professional standards or whether inappropriate involvement in prescribing could give rise to professional misconduct or unsatisfactory professional conduct? And I ask you because these issues come up, for example, not in the psychotropics area specifically, but this is a regular matter that no doubt you have to look at in relation to prescribing of anabolic steroids, Schedule Eight drugs and a range of other medications.
Yes, thank you, Council. So yes, we we recognise these sorts of standards and competencies when it comes to looking at an individual practitioner around a notification about their standard of practice around conduct or performance. And the board would then look at at what was available in terms of the standards by peers, particularly around competency standards in such documents as the National Competency Standards for Pharmacists and also in prescribing competencies and associated documents. So we would utilise all of those available because they are available to all professionals to be able to utilise in terms of determining their their standard of practice.
Mr Martin, do you have any views or comments that you wish to make about Proposition One?
I'm definitely supportive. The competency framework for pharmacists is what we base our program on. We create a map for accredited pharmacists based on that process. Having an overarching map linked to all professions that would then inform the competency map for pharmacists would seem like a logical approach to me. As I said in my evidence brief, we we're busy at the moment remapping the new standards, new competency framework, I'm sorry, to what we do to make sure there are no gaps, no, nothing missing. And then we're building down from that to create a whole list of evidence examples for pharmacists to actually assess themselves against every year as as a request to by the pharmacy board. So I think it's an excellent starting point.
So i- if there was sort of broad agreement in principle about Proposition One, who or which body or is it government, who takes responsibility of starting to get a commitment around the development of a competency framework? Who bears that responsibility? And I'll open that question to everybody.
Um, Council, if I might start, I think that that the example that Mr Simmons has given on the N P S medicines wise competencies shows that it is across professions, but I think there that has been a really useful way of developing standards, but from the National Board's perspective, I might pass to Mr Simmons on that.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Look, I agree with what you've said and that's why I raised it as an example. I think the National Medicines Prescribing Competencies is a cross-professional standard of of competencies and and I think it worked out really well in terms of getting a number of experts around the table and from a whole lot of different professions and accrediting bodies as well and also education providers. And I think it's, it's a responsibility of everyone coming together to produce some, a document that everyone can then utilise. And I think it's very important to involve everyone in that consultation. Now, I also think if it, the consult, if the competency framework was about specifically cognitive disability, then I think it's very important to involve people and organisations that support those groups in the conversation as well. But I think it could be done on a number of different ways and everyone brought together. In terms of who would be have overall responsibility, I think it's it's sometimes the Commonwealth that has that responsibility. But I think if there was a number of professions involved, then it's something that we could do from possibly an opera point of view as well.
I I think one of the issues that the Royal Commission's heard is somebody's got to go first. And so is it a matter of the professions waiting either till government says this is a good idea? Or should the drive come from the professions themselves and government then ask to respond? So what we might call the proverbial chicken and egg scenario. I mean, how do you, how do you overcome that? Who goes first?
Look, I'm happy to go first. Look, it is a difficult situation. I think it can be driven both ways, I think, depending on the funding model as well. But I think if there's one organisation that can bring people together and possibly drive this, it could be from a national registration accreditation scheme wise way of doing that, which contains all the the boards, all the national health profession boards and also the accreditation authorities. So I think that's one area that could drive, drive this. Another way would be from government, but I think there's certain several ways that this can be done. So if the boards were keen and got together with the accreditation authorities, I think that's a good step forward to try and start getting this discussion going and consultation.
Professor Abernathy, where do the universities fit in? We've asked these similar questions to the medical deans. Do you have a view from the other health professions?
Look, it's a discussion and a development we want to be engaged with. Now, of course, there's, that involves a number of collective groups at at national level that bring sort of the nurses and midwives together, that bring the allied health professions together and the like. My response, perhaps naive to your question, would have been I would have thought something that the Commission hinted strongly as as a responsibility for APRA with broad consultation to the whole range of stakeholders would be a good way of progressing this forward. The, anything that's very discipline-specific is just going to lead us with into challenges around some of these other propositions around a common language of discussion across health professionals, interprofessional education and interprofessional care agenda. So I I think the fundamental thing is that it should be cross-professional. And the other, which is probably stating the absolute obvious is the wider the consultation, the more likely it is to be adopted in a sensible way.
That probably i- is a helpful point to move to Proposition Five, which is the collaboration and multidisciplinary approach. We've heard from the speech pathologists this morning that interprofessional practice is a better expression than multidisciplinary approach. Proposition Five looks at training and education for health professionals and suggests it should address the importance and skills necessary to work collaboratively with families, support people, advocates, professionals from various health and social disciplines. So Professor Abernathy, do students taking pharmacy, psychology or speech pathology have that opportunity in their undergraduate courses and education to take an interprofessional or interdisciplinary approach?
Council, I'm delighted you've asked me that question because I can give you a much more positive answer now than I might have been able to give you a few years ago, but what we did in our faculty was in amongst the crowded curricula that you've already referred to, found space in amongst roughly a dozen undergraduate health degrees for a common first year program, a common first year course that introduced all health professionals to the Australian Health System and the role of different professions in that. And this, this was taught in a blended learning way where the groups were composed of students from from different degree programs. We've set that up in year one and then that's reinforced throughout the full four years by various scaffolded learning experiences where you have more than, more than two professions together to look at particular case studies. So at an educational perspective, we think this is so, so important, it's become really front and centre for us about how do you train people to have the requisite understanding of other professions, but also the the skill sets to listen, to negotiate, to be able to argue a point and and accept a point based on evidence. So that what graduates working together can offer is a single integrated care plan rather than as many care plans as there are professions involved in the case. Now, at an educational perspective, we can control that part where it becomes messy for us is at the interface between interprofessional education and then students morphing into interprofessional, into care environments that may not be interprofessional. So it's almost a generational change, we think, in order to bring about really functional teams in the health system. But educationally, we think it's absolutely imperative.
Mr Martin, can I ask you that it it seems obvious that in terms of doing home medication reviews which involve report back to G Ps and other health practitioners? And in the area of prescribing with psychotropic medications, probably behaviour support specialists and also N D I S providers. What approach do you take to collaboration and a multidisciplinary approach in the work that you do?
As part of the assessment programme, there's a an emphasis on collaboration with the other allied health professionals. What we find from your practice is that where the the links are there between the doctors and nurses and other support staff, that's when the most benefit is obtained from the program. They work together, they know each other. There's more conversation, more collaboration. So the the ability to to link to other professionals is a vital component. We try and promote that through the assessment programme as a, as the beginning point. We also then try and highlight that through research and information available to accredited pharmacists from our website and also through our two conference programmes. So it's a, it's an important aspect. We push it as hard as we can when we can. Having a more a single point of entry for the information more useful for a lot of people rather than trying to find it themselves. We, we try and collate and collect. But looking at what we do, it's probably a little bit, a little bit mismatched. We would like a more focused way of obtaining that information for our people. But the collaboration is a must-have for the program to work well.
Can I ask you, just in terms of what you do through the assessment and the collection of data, what tools do you use to evaluate whether or not you're achieving a requisite standard of collaboration and a multidisciplinary approach? How do you measure that?
It's probably a difficult question to answer, actually. I think it comes down to the outcomes themselves. If the the patients are receiving the the correct care, the collaboration is working, the patients benefit. That's one probably fault with the entire program is that the the outcomes are not really centrally collected at this stage. There's a intuitive, or intuition, intuitively it seems the programs work well, but there's no central collection of data on outcomes. And that's been a fault with the program for the life of the program. There've been various research projects over the year trying to assess what the outcomes are and where they, where they work. We're involved in one of those at the moment, but there's no, no large scale program. And outcomes collection is probably something that needs to be done and done well over the next few years.
Well, that might take me neatly to Proposition Eleven, which is where the consideration should be given to establishing a network of centres of excellence on cognitive disability as hubs for training, education and resources. And also strengthening the opportunities for health professionals to access training across particular networks. I asked you the question about how do you evaluate and collect data? You say that's a difficult question. Would it be fair to say that there isn't at present a central approach to collecting, collecting or sharing data of this kind?
That's correct, yes.
And I've asked this members of this panel to think about Proposition Eleven. From your perspective, would there be support for establishing a network of centres of excellence with a particular focus on cognitive disability? And would that assist in questions such as collection of data, evaluation and developing different resources to assist health professionals to work collaboratively?
Without a doubt. It sort of mimics what we do with the program. We look for subject matter experts and go to them for supporting what we do in constructing our program and quality improving our program. Having access, access to a, a point, a central point of the information where we know that the information is up to date and appropriate and has been written and put together by people who understand intimately what's going on with the, these individuals. That would be an amazing benefit. Promoting that then access that material to all accredited pharmacists. I would think most of them would leave with this opportunity to have a, have access to that material. Speaking to a few pharmacists, I recently, they are all quite experienced accredited pharmacists, but they have to, they had to say they're a little bit would be a little bit uncertain in dealing with people with major intellectual disabilities. Because they're not familiar with, familiar with the CLANC and all that much. So having access to material from experts would be a major plus.
Mr Simmons, Ms Clark, from a regulator's perspective, how would centres of excellence fit with your particular and respective roles and responsibilities? And invite you if there's anything you want to add to Proposition Eleven at all.
Well, if I, if I start, Brett, I, I think there would be considerable value in in such a centre. I note the work that was, that's been done by New Safar's Health with, for the Intellectual Disability Mental Health Core Framework and the resources that are available there, which I was not aware of until the Commission's listening to previous panels. I think that that would help us with the work that we do right across the professions for our accreditation standards, to have an ability for a central place for people to get, to get further information, to develop their programs and to assess against those. So I would be in favour of that.
Mr Simmons?
Yeah, from the board's point of view, I think the board would be very in favour of that as well. I would think it will benefit education providers and health professionals to be able to access that sort of information. So I think it would be of value for the profession as a whole.
And again, I'm going to ask you the hard question. Who should be responsible for the establishment or funding of centres of excellence? Does that come from the profession itself or do we look to government? Again.
I think we'd probably look to government for that would be my, my formation, but I would think the funding is a key issue, as you would be aware, and I think that would drive sort of changes available in that space.
Mr Simmons, you surprised me.
Professor Abernathy, from the university's perspective, not only teaching our future pharmacists, but also research that the universities undertake. What would be the perspective from the university sector, and I know you can only speak for U Q, to networks of centres of excellence? You have had some experience of a centre of excellence in Queensland.
So you've preempted my first comment, which is So you've preempted my first comment, which is, one A as it reads, is silent on the issue of research, yet as you described it, there was a heavy reliance on data and evaluation. And I think in the world we occupy, centres of excellence would generally have a strong research component. And if you're looking at best models for academic health science centres, there are three legs to the stool. There's the healthcare delivery element, there's the educational and future workforce element, and there's the research and development of best practice elements. So I think centres that do that would, perhaps more holistically than was described there, would have great support from the university sector. The only other point I'd make is, it's probably worthwhile as a preparatory step, actually doing a serious audit of all the resources that already exist in different parts. In wearing another hat on the Australian Council of Deans of Health Science, within the last month, we've had some excellent resources, free resources circulated from, developed at Monash for allied health and disability. And there are other entities around like the CRC Autism, for instance, which has developed a set of resources. So I do think it would be worth, before necessarily starting what looks like a very good idea, to actually have a good audit of what's out there already. I think we'd all be surprised if we could have that assembled in a single place and have good access to it.
That might suggest that a fourth element to such a centre would be coordination of a range of institutions. It's interesting that work that is done in one state is not necessarily disseminated to another state in a way that allows the other state to take advantage immediately of that work.
Agreed.
Commissioner, I'm conscious of the time and thank you for the indulgence in going a little over time. We have, again, just touched on the surface of many important issues. And commissioners, you've got a large amount of material provided by our witnesses who are participating in the panel today, and also other material that the commission has received in other hearings, including a very detailed submission from the Pharmaceutical Society of Australia, which is part of the evidence for PH6. So I will be quiet, I won't ask any further questions, and the commissioners may have some questions.
Commissioner Galvall, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you very much. I'm very, this is a very important area, of course, and Ms McGowan really outlined that. And I'm interested in the relationship and the training relationship with GPs especially, because a lot of the over prescribing or the inappropriate prescribing, you're dealing with trying to wind that back and negotiating almost. And so that interdisciplinary, interprofessional relationship seems very important. And, you know, I wondered where that had got to in a formal sense, the two areas coming together, so it isn't just left to persuasion. You know, if the prescription's inappropriate, you know, these groups are at risk. So I'd love some commentary on that, thanks.
I'm happy to start off, if I can be of help there, Commissioner. I think you will find that from a board's point of view, we look to our code of conduct to provide the basis for the interprofessional interaction and the way practitioners are supposed to act and collaborate with other health professions. And I think it's really, really important, both the medical board and the pharmacy board have codes of conduct. And I think it's very important to raise awareness with practitioners about that because I absolutely agree with you, the collaboration between health professionals is the only way we're going to get better patient-centered care. And I absolutely think it's something that we need to work on, and I think we can do it as a board, I think we can raise the awareness of that and have discussions with the medical board as well around that space. But I think it's about focusing attention and actually raising awareness as well in that area.
Commissioner, from a perspective of accreditation standards, a significant change in the last few years around the expectation of interprofessional education has happened. And one of my other hats, I chair the Health Professions Accreditation Collaborative Forum. We've just undertaken a review of all of the 15 regulated professions accreditation standards, and we've identified that 13 of the 15 providers, professions require interprofessional education, and the other two were developing them as part of their accreditation standards. So with a better platform for our newly graduated health professionals doing interprofessional education, such as Professor Abernathy has described, we expect, the expectation will be that the relationships and the collaboration from a university perspective will flow into practice.
Commissioner, could I just add one element, which is kind of a research element to your question? You may or may not be aware, the Medical Research Futures Fund has just quite recently put out a call for major research projects that are looking at the safe use of medicines that deal with some of those questions around health services interfaces. So it may well be that some of that research will be valuable in informing the question that you've posed to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Professor Abernathy, I'm particularly interested in the dental school within your faculty, but that's not the subject of this particular panel, it's a later panel. Perhaps I might suggest we might put some questions in writing to you about that.
Okay. Are you happy, excuse me, are you happy to try and answer those?
It's particularly the Doctor of Clinical Dentistry and Special Needs Dentistry.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, perhaps more connected to Grant Martin's material, expand upon Commissioner Galvall's question about what actually, what a pharmacist actually does now when they have concerns, other than a polite letter and maybe a phone call to the prescribing GP. And one of the, some of the material I've read is a scenario that I'll put to you is that for a number of group homes, there could be the same GP shared by a number of residents. And then it's the same pharmacist that will assemble the medications into blister packs. What happens when they realise, the pharmacist sees a pattern of the nature of drugs, or an over prescription of drugs, or an interconnection of the drugs that are not the right mix? What do they actually do to prevent that happening? What support do they get? What is the complaint mechanism? How do they actually pursue that if the polite letter doesn't work?
That makes a difficult situation. To get a quick response, it's not a fast process to put a complaint through the system. It can take some time. Pharmacists have professional responsibility to act on what they're saying, so if there is a major concern, they need to, the encouragement is to actually consult more with the doctor and push the point that there is an issue here. As to getting more support, they can refer to other colleagues, they can also refer to other people in the practice, but the working with facility itself and on discussing the issue with the doctor, looking for a meeting with the group, whose options fall on within that facility. But a structured complaint is a difficult process and it does take time for the process to work through as a system, so it's not ideal for an immediate response. It comes down, I think really that pharmacist needs to step up and push. If they don't believe what's going on is correct or there's a major fault, they need to push back with the doctor and insist on a meeting with the doctor to resolve the situation. Otherwise, it could go on for weeks or months before there's any resolution formally. And that's the hard part, I suppose many pharmacists are a little bit hesitant to argue to point to vigorously with the GP. But it comes down to professional responsibility, and that's what they really need to do as part of the role of the health professional. I know there's, I've seen examples recently in the media where a pharmacist is backed down on a situation with an overdose medication and is wrong with it to the detriment of the patient, of course. That's what we try to encourage, or we point out these situations, encourage people to stand their ground and talk through the clinical issues, the therapeutic issues, and push it back with the doctor until they get a resolution. That's their responsibility as a health professional now, I view.
But... Is it something more than needed, just other than ideally, if collaboration works and professional understanding and client focus, that the individual, is there some other mechanism that's needed where that quick alert can say there is a pattern emerging, there is a problem here, and it's not being fixed fast enough to the benefit and the protection of the individual?
Having a rapid response from a third party, I'm trying for want of a better word, might be valuable. There would need to be someone highly qualified across a range of fields, including the therapeutics involved, but being able to refer an issue quickly to someone like that for further consultation with the doctor with more support from that person might result in a much faster response in an amendment, a change to treatment patterns would be a difficult, I think it would be expensive system to set up, but in extreme circumstances could save lives.
Professor Abernathy, just as a matter of interest, why is the entry degree for pharmacy an honours degree?
With changes in the Australian Quality Framework a few years ago, four-year degree programs have honours built into them rather than as a postgraduate separate year.
So you can get a Bachelor of Pharmacy without honours, but that won't be sufficient to gain your entry into the profession?
Well, that may differ, and my colleagues might be better positioned to answer that in respect to other universities. In our case, all we offer in the four-year entry degree is a Bachelor of Pharmacy with honours.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr Costello, Mrs MacMillan, Miss Furness if they have any questions of the panel.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
In that case, thank you very much for coming to the commission and giving evidence today. We very much appreciate your assistance, including the statements that you have prepared and other information in writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, could we adjourn now for the lunch break, but slightly shorter than an hour? And if we could return at ten past one?
All right.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn until ten past one Sydney time, ten past twelve Brisbane time.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mrs Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next panel is our psychologists panel, and you'll hear shortly from Rachel Phillips, who's the CEO of the Psychology Board of Australia, Michael Carpenter from the Australian Psychological Accreditation Council, and Dr Zena Burgess from the Australian Psychological Society. And this panel will focus on propositions one, three, seven and 10, time permitting.
Mrs Eastman, I just might take the opportunity to explain to the panel where everybody is. In the, Mrs Eastman, who will ask you some questions, is in the Sydney Hearing Room together with Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Bennett and myself. Commissioner Galvall is joining the hearing from Melbourne.
As of December 2020, there are almost 41,000 registered psychologists in Australia. Eighty per cent of registered psychologists are women, and many women work part-time. In terms of the area of psychology, the areas of practice endorsement, and Ms Phillips discusses this in paragraph 64 of her statement, are as follows. Clinical neuropsychology, clinical psychology, community psychology, counselling psychology, educational and developmental psychology, forensic psychology, health psychology, organisational psychology and sport and exercise psychology. So the area of psychology and the work that psychologists do in Australia covers quite broad areas, which are not just confined to the health profession, but more broadly across many aspects of our lives. To become a registered psychologist in Australia generally involves a six-year sequence of education and training. This typically is a four-year board-approved accredited sequence of study, followed by a two-year psychology board-supervised practice program. Our, members of our panel today all have great experience in the way in which psychologists undertake their professional duties. And I want to start with Dr Zena Burgess. You are speaking on behalf of the Australian Psychological Society, the APS?
That's correct.
And what's your role with the APS?
I'm the Chief Executive Officer.
How many members are there in Australia?
We have 25,000 members, of whom about 18,000 are fully registered psychologists. The others are psychologists in training and students.
And your role for the APS, what does that involve?
I'm responsible for the staff of the office and for stakeholder engagement and for advocacy and assisting with policy development.
And in terms of the areas of work, I've just listed a number of areas where there's the recognised practice endorsement areas. In your experience, can you tell the Royal Commission, where do psychologists most frequently work?
A large proportion of psychologists work in private practice. They also work in schools, some in the public sector, and various psychologists working in corporate settings, either in HR, learning and development, and management consulting.
And to the extent you can answer this question, and if you can't, please let me know. With the number of psychologists who are the members of APS or more broadly, I think there are almost 41,000 registered psychologists, how many psychologists would have the responsibility for the care and treatment of people with cognitive disability on a day-to-day basis?
I couldn't answer that statistically.
Would it be the case that you would expect that psychologists would, at some stage during their professional career, have the responsibility for the care and treatment of people with cognitive disability?
A number of psychologists work with the NDIS and clinical psychologists and forensic psychologists, sorry, neurological psychologists. Some counselling psychologists certainly work with families and people with forms of disability, cognitive disability, and some psychologists who work in schools, but actual numbers I couldn't give you.
And do you know if there is any source of data that identifies the number of psychologists who may have interaction with people with cognitive disability? Do you know if that data exists?
No, I don't.
Right. Rachel Phillips, can I turn to you? You are the CEO of the Psychology Board, and you've also provided a statement to the Royal Commission. Can you tell us what is the role and responsibility of the Psychology Board?
Thank you. I'm the Chair of the Psychology Board of Australia, which is a ministerial appointment. The board, within the national scheme, the national regulation and accreditation scheme, is responsible for ensuring that there are suitably qualified psychologists trained, and there's a sustainable supply of that workforce to meet the needs of the Australian community. So there's five broad objectives underpinning the national law that's outlined in my submission. In terms of the last two objectives around access and sustainable workforce supply, that is probably something that is the focus of this commission more broadly.
So the board has the responsibility for registering psychologists and provisional psychologists, is that right?
Correct.
Developing standards, codes and guidelines for psychology, for the psychology profession?
Correct.
You also deal with notifications, complaints, investigations and the disciplinary side of regulating psychologists, is that right?
Correct.
You also oversee the assessment of overseas... You also oversee the assessment of overseas-trained psychologists who wish to practise in Australia?
Yes.
And you approve accreditation standards and accredited courses of study, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And part of that work will take us to Mr Carpenter, who is the CEO of the Australian Psychological Accreditation Council, APAC. And Mr Carpenter, is it right that APAC is an independent quality and safeguards organisation appointed by the Psychology Board of Australia as the Higher Education Accreditation Authority? I might need you off the move, if that's okay?
My apologies, that's correct.
And APAC was established in 2005 to set national standards of education and training of psychologists and to accredit programmes of study, is that right?
That is right, yes.
Now, in your statement, which you've provided to the Royal Commission, you have provided us with a graph that sets out, or a little image that sets out the way in which the accreditation standards operate. And it looks a little complex, so I'm going to ask that that come up on the screen and ask you just to explain the process of accreditation. Commissioners, if the commissioners are using their hearing folder prepared for today's hearing, you'll find behind tab twenty-one.
Thank you.
Mr Carpenter's statements. And if you turn four pages in, you'll see that there is a copy of the graph that's just been, or the image just been put up on the screen. Now, Mr Carpenter, can you walk us through what looks on paper to be a very complex assessment and accreditation system with lots of different steps? How does this work in practice?
Sure. So, within the whole process, as you can see, there are multiple steps, but there are four main parts to it. There is the initial assessment of a programme, and of the 650 to 700 or so programmes that are accredited by APAC. We will thoroughly review those at least once every five years. So this diagram that you've got shared on the screen really refers to that process. So there are really two parts to the assessment that we undertake of a programme. The first is the left-hand column, as part of which the education provider makes a significant written submission to us, demonstrating how their programme or programmes of psychology meet the agreed national standards. That's reviewed by a panel of appointed assessors who are experts in their field and trained to undertake the assessment. That's then supplemented by, as you see in the second column, the so-called site visit, where our team of assessors will normally visit the premises of the higher education provider, spend several days meeting stakeholders in the programme, staff, students, supervisors, testing what the education provider has provided in the written submission, and assuring themselves that either the standards have been met, or identifying whether there are shortfalls against those standards. Then, post that site visit, which is the last formal part of the assessment process, that team will prepare a detailed report on how the programme or programmes meet the standards, again identifying where there may be any shortfalls. And then that's communicated, sorry, that decision is then communicated to APAC's board, who make a formal decision on whether that programme is accredited. And if so, whether any conditions apply to that programme, which are essentially shortfalls that have to be made good. And then our decision is reported to the Psychology Board of Australia, who have their own process for then approving that decision as a qualification that will lead to registration. Now, the final column is really the work that takes place between those five yearly visits. So we don't just assess a programme and then leave it for five years and come back. There's ongoing engagement with that education provider and their programmes, including an annual report provided by the education provider, which advises us of any changes that impact on the programme, any developments, and gives us early warning of where there may be issues that we want to dig into a little bit more. And so this is a continuous cycle that applies to all the programmes that we accredited. So obviously very happy to go into more detail, but that's how it works at a high level.
So, Mr Carpenter, I might just get your sound quality checked, so bear with us, but I might turn to you, Ms Phillips. In terms of accreditation standards for psychology, the current accreditation standards came into effect on the first of January 2019, is that right?
Correct.
And in terms of the accreditation standards, can you tell the Royal Commission the extent to which those standards make specific reference to the care and treatment of people with cognitive disability?
So the standards that do align with the general registration competencies for psychologists in Australia that are across eight competency domains. And so any of the standards in terms of the application of assessment, psychological interventions, working with people across diverse groups, would it be inclusive of people with a cognitive disability? This is, so the standards are aligned in terms of foundational knowledge, pre-competency, and then professional knowledge. So pre-competency, professional knowledge, and then the professional knowledge components. And so if you think of it as a sequential learning of those general registration competencies from year one through to year six.
Now, I want to move to the propositions, and I think all of you have got a copy of the propositions documents. And Dr Burgess, can I start with you in relation to Proposition One, which is the competency framework? And I think you've expressed some views about a competency framework in your statement. Can I ask you, does the APS support a competency framework?
Yeah, APS is very keen to see a competency framework for better interventions and better care and treatment of people with cognitive abilities. We're keen to see the importance of, we see the importance of including in it the development and application of a competency framework that addresses the clauses 1.1 and 1.2. And we see that the APS and other peak bodies is having a role in influencing and assisting the professions to develop best practice in this area.
How would that be done?
Most of, what we do is we either work collaboratively with other organisations and develop a competency framework. And we also work actively to develop professional development programmes for people who are fully trained or on the way through training, for them to develop skills in particular areas that reflect the emerging needs of the profession.
Now, in terms of a competency framework, what is your expectation about the application of a competency framework to the undergraduate university education? And then, as I understand it, that there's a requirement to complete a Masters of Psychology if one wants to follow the pathway to become a registered psychologist. Do you see room for a competency framework at that early entry level stage?
Well, as Rachel described it, theoretical knowledge would be included in what is already taught in these sequential programmes. The opportunity comes from having placements for students where they can work actively under supervision with members of the community who have cognitive disabilities. So they have exposure to the work and experienced professionals to coach them to ensure they perform really well. So that then builds a workforce that's used to working with the client population and doing so effectively.
I want to come and ask you specifically about Proposition Seven, which is the supervised clinical placements in a moment. But, Ms Phillips, can I ask you about the Board's view on a competency framework? What's the Board's position?
Thank you. We are absolutely in support of an interprofessional approach to competency development for health practitioners in regards to cognitive disability and how better to support people. We agree with Proposition 1.4, where it actually talks about a tiered approach. And the way that I like to think about it is that it's thinking about what should every health practitioner know about working with people? What do you need to know as part of your profession? And so that would be something that would become as part of your professional training. And then what do you need to know based on your location of work? So this could be part of the NDIS, that already has a capability framework, or other sectors where health professions, professionals work. I think the other point the Board would like to make is that we really need to think about how we teach health practitioners to work with each other in delivering services to people with cognitive disability, because they actually, the most complex of cases that might come into our health services are the ones that will fall through the cracks. And that's usually a system issue, it's not a patient or a client issue. So adopting an interprofessional approach that actually assists health practitioners to reflect on how they deliver care and the process of engagement and listening to people, I think is fundamental to any training approach.
How can that best be done, in your view?
Well, I think it's actually having a commitment to a multidisciplinary or a multi-profession approach that is actually co-designed with people who have lived experience of disability and also their carers.
How do you do that?
Well, part of that is actually sitting down and talking about when things have gone wrong, or when things have actually gone right, and what are the key principles to either the polar experiences of people? And how can we actually instil this into what I like to call the art of caring? So we assume that health professionals are competent, but actually what people want is that they want to know that they care about them, and so that they can then trust their loved ones, if it's a carer, or that someone who isn't able to communicate their needs, that the health practitioner will actually work as hard as possible to understand. And that's a process. That is something that I think from a communication point of view, you can only do through scenario-based learning, working with people with lived experience to actually change your approach in, I guess, the environment that you work.
Mr Carpenter, just taking up Ms Phillips' description of ways in which questions around care and developing that sense of care in our practitioners, how does that fit into the work that you do when you look at courses for the purpose of accreditation? Do you look at what some might call the soft skills?
Yes, absolutely. And I'll try and speak up a little bit if there are sound quality issues. And so the accreditation standards for psychology programmes that you referred to a little earlier, that were launched two years ago, do have a specific reference to interprofessional learning and collaboration. So there is a requirement now on providers of programmes, seeking accreditation from APAC, to include an element of interprofessional learning. And so that obviously looks different at the undergraduate level to the postgraduate level. But it is something we assess, it's something we expect to see, and I think something we're seeing education providers better engage with. So I guess a good example of what you might see at the postgraduate level is an education provider actually offering opportunities to students in psychology to work as part of a case team with students from other health disciplines, working with patients in clinical settings. So that is something that's starting to happen, and it's absolutely something we require to happen as part of the psychology education.
And Dr Burgess, from your perspective, do you see, from the views of your members and understanding the experience of your members, whether there is opportunities to develop this concept of care and instilling in new graduates care as a mode of engaging with their clients?
I think that certainly people who go into the profession start from a willingness and a wantingness to care for others and to be carers and professional supports and advisers and offer interventions. That's start of where they start. The gap is, as I started to say earlier, in providing opportunities for placement in settings where they can work in as part of multi-disciplinary teams, they can work alongside other psychologists and learn to be skilled professionals in this area. That is a difficulty and one of the challenges that gets in the way of people completing their training as easily as they could.
So that sort of takes us to Proposition Seven, which is dealing with the supervised clinical placement issues. Why is that such a difficulty in the field of psychology? What's, is there something that's happened recently? Is it something to do with changes to the rollout of the NDIS? What's the reason?
I don't think it's just changes with the NDIS, but I think that hasn't made it easy. I think it is very hard to find enough places of employment that allow the scope for practitioners to have the time to supervise others and the willingness to supervise others. And Rachel will have views about this as well. There seems to have been something that's lost in the culture of professionals to supervise others and take on the responsibility of that. So it's partly culture, partly time, partly the structure of workplaces, but it's one of the big things that if it could be addressed, it would make a huge difference in this area.
What particular clinical placements or clinical settings do you think psychologists in their training phase need to have? Where do we look to? Is it a hospital setting? Is it in private practice? Is it in a school setting?
It would be across the board. You could provide, you could provide opportunities in any of those settings, and it would benefit the population of people we're talking about now.
And who has the responsibility to either offer or fund clinical placements?
I can't say who would have the responsibility, but it would be fabulous. At the moment, these positions are not really funded, so there has to be funding found for them. It would be the employing organisation would need to find the funding, or the students, well, I don't want to volunteer the students to fund their own placements.
Ms Phillips, have you got a view on Proposition Seven and the clinical supervised clinical placements? What's the current concerns of the Board?
Thank you, Counsel. What we've observed probably over the last 10 to 15 years, so I think it is longer than the commencement of the NDIS, is that while psychologists in their pre-entry training have more than sufficient exposure to individual differences, so people with disability across the life course, they don't have the, as great opportunity anymore to actually consolidate that learning through placements or work integrated employment. Placement capacity seems to be influenced by a couple of drivers. So one of the ones that the Board has looked into in depth is whether there's sufficient numbers of supervisors who are suitably trained to supervise provisional psychologists. And the Board has a process of which any psychologist with the required number of years' training does a course to, so that they can safely supervise provisional psychologists. And current numbers is that we actually have a one to two ratio of supervisors to provisional psychologists. So that's actually not a problem. We have enough supervisors in Australia. Where we're actually struggling is around the capacity to provide supervision to psychologists working in, being immersed in the disability sector. So traditionally, before the NDIS, psychologists would work in the state government disability services in, say, a behaviour support role, and do their training or placements there. Now that the NDIS model has changed to a fee-for-service model, those supervision opportunities aren't readily available because any senior psychologist is now a provider. And so the governance arrangements to actually take on students would be seen as an add-on or potentially a lost income opportunity. And I say this generally because I do know that there are psychologists who are incredibly invested in training the future workforce. But what we've seen and what we hear anecdotally, and I think that's what Zena is referring to, has been a gap of actual that immersion. So where placements now are for provisional psychologists to actually hone their skills with people with disability are at the pointy end. So they're in the health sector, they're in forensic mental health, they're in correctional services. There's always been a really strong foothold in education, but you actually probably even need it earlier than that in the childcare setting, but also the early intervention of the NDIS overseas. So what we're finding is that's like. So what we're finding is that psychologists are getting good assessment skills. But in terms of actually supporting functional behaviour assessments and positive behaviour support plans, the board's quite concerned about the future workforce supply and availability of those skills that are actually really fundamentally required to reduce the need for restrictive practices, to reduce offending and people prematurely or entering the criminal justice system, but also not being able to get their needs met when they enter healthcare.
The Royal Commission's heard at public hearing six, which looked at the question of psychotropic medication. The commission has heard a lot about the area of behaviour support practitioners. And many practitioners seem to come from backgrounds of psychology or experience as psychologists or counsellors. And this is an area which the Royal Commission has heard is now also regulated by the Quality and Safeguards Commission. What has that meant in terms of the work that the board has done in working with a new regulator such as the Quality and Safeguards Commission? Is that something that the boards had to address?
So we regulate individual practitioners and we oversee the development of accreditation standards. So while we have heard from the Commissioner into safety and quality in disability, the working relationship is still in relation to individual practitioners. Having said that, I do think that the implementation of the senior practitioner, who actually oversees the use of restrictive practices, but also approves specialist behaviour support is incredibly important in terms of instilling good governance within the scheme. I do think that there is an opportunity to look at how psychologists can support the training of other professions when it comes to functional behavioural analysis. That's our bread and butter in terms of understanding someone's behaviour, what drives it, what reinforces it. And so it does concern the board that probably students aren't getting those opportunities to really consolidate their skills. And we know that if you do a clinical placement in, or a placement to start with in an area of employment, you're more likely to work there.
Ms Phillips, can I ask you how what you've just said is consistent with your answers to question nine in your statement, which appears at least in the printed version on page 12 of 13? In particular, paragraph 74 says that the organisation considers that the general psychology competencies and the AOPE, that is area of practice endorsement, competencies are sufficient to meet the needs of clients with intellectually, intellectually or I assume that's meant to be intellectual or cognitive disability. Our experience suggests it would be extremely unlikely that a case for action could be made to the ministerial council to agree a new to agree to a new, I suppose, programme relating to the care and treatment of people with intellectual or cognitive disability. A new AOPE may not be in the best interest of clients with intellectual cognitive disabilities. The argument, as I understand it, that you've put in your statement is that the eight areas that you have identified as core competencies equip all psychology graduates to provide care and treatment to the extent necessary to people with cognitive disability. That appears in paragraph 67, where you say all psychologists are expected to be able to practise safely and professionally with clients who present with cognitive and intellectual disabilities. Isn't what you've just been telling us that there are gaps in the educational programme and that we can't assume that all psychologists have the skills that are necessary to act safely and professionally with clients who present with cognitive and intellectual disabilities?
Thank you for your clarification, Commissioner. I probably would proffer a different interpretation of what I've said in relation to my submission. I think that the difference between minimum threshold is demonstrated by competency and someone wanting to go and work in the disability sector are two very different things. So all accredited programmes and all supervisors must confirm that someone is competent and eligible for general registration at the completion of their training. And that will include exposure to clients with varying degrees of cognitive disability. The placement opportunities that exist probably are not as varied as what they have been in the past and more focused on other government sectors than probably the exposure to the disability sector. So psychologists work in every sector of employment in Australia. We're quite diverse in terms of our skill set. And so what I'm proffering is that we have the necessary theory, knowledge and skill set. But there isn't the, I guess, the linkage opportunities that you get from placements in the sector to then encourage more psychologists to work in the disability sector.
It isn't the whole point of an area of practice endorsement that it is a voluntary means by which a psychologist can get an endorsement, in other words, a tick that everybody can see that that person has got special skills in a particular area, whether it be forensic psychology or organisational psychology, which are two of these areas that you have identified. Why doesn't exactly the same reasoning not apply to psychologists who wish to work with people who have cognitive and intellectual disability? After all, it's a voluntary programme and it signifies that someone has done extra work and should be recognised as such, which is a very common thing in the profession.
So I think there is a difference, Commissioner, between a vocational area of interest compared to an area of practice endorsement as it's understood under the national law. The area of practice endorsements are a recognition of advanced qualification and they're deliberately focused on areas of practice, not to particular client groups. So for example, if you were, if you undertook a period of training for forensic psychology, you could work with client groups across the forensic sector. So whether that's in mental health, corrections, family court. So it's deliberately broad. So when you, for example, look at disability, this would also encompass, so clinical neuropsychology or the competency domain that we tend to focus on that would be related to client groups would be psychological assessment and then also the psychological interventions. Are quite broad in terms of teaching psychologists around test selection, test administration and then formulating bespoke tailored treatments to that client in front of them. So we feel that the competencies that have been developed are necessarily broad enough to encompass cognitive disability. But we do feel that there is a, there's been a change in market forces that have influenced interest of psychologists to actually work in the disability area.
Interesting.
Could I ask a question at this point? It's that, I'm just, it's the same with numbers of professional areas that in the change to disability, which is people moving out into the community no longer, you know, like to some degree, no longer living where they're conveniently reached. You know, they're out doing all sorts of things. People with cognitive disability, which is really great. Is that part of what makes it harder? That in the old days, you could go into state facilities and there they all were. And now they're out in the world and it's harder to.
To access them. Oh, I think that is a wonderful clarifying question, Commissioner. Look, I think that the business model is a huge driver in terms of what psychologists choose to do in terms of their work. So there has been a change in workforce demographics over the last 20 years that has undoubtedly been driven by changes in funding. So where before the majority of psychologists worked in government sectors or in human resource environments or large consulting firms, the majority now work in private practice, either small or sole providers. So there's a business model. And Medicare, I think, has influenced these really strong workforce growth that we're seeing in people wanting to become psychologists. But it's also the demand is so great, so they can pick and choose. So I think that that is a driver. I don't think that there has been a change in terms of wanting to assist and to help. I do think that there is a link between if you have a placement in a particular area, you will be more likely to go and work in that area. And so Zena's earlier point around placements is absolutely a driving factor, I think, to some of the challenges that have been reported.
Dr Burgess, can I come back to you just to finish Proposition 7? What reforms do you think need to occur to improve supervised clinical placements being available for people training as psychologists?
Commissioner, could you ask me that question again? I just, a couple of things have popped into my mind. I want to know where to start appropriately.
I'm inviting you to say what you'd like to tell the commissioners about. What reforms, what needs to be done to secure supervised clinical placements for trainee psychologists?
Well, I think that there needs to be incentives for people to offer the placements, incentives for supervisors to supervise, both in the private sector and in the public sector. And as Rachel said, you could actually make it a pretty well mandatory rotation to have exposure to working in this area of disability. And once people have a first exposure, whether it's doctors or psychologists, they'll stay in the setting. If they get imprinted, they get attached to it. So it's getting that first exposure right and making sure it's a quality experience for them. Helping people to reflect on their experience and to work with the carers and work in the settings with people with cognitive disability. Just, it is, it's an exposure issue. The other point I wanted to make is about what Rachel was saying about it being a business model. If a psychologist, whether they're a trainer or a supervisor, is paid a certain amount of money for doing one kind of work and a lesser amount of money for doing another, as a small business person, they'll do the work that pays them the greatest amount. So there are times when the disability sector doesn't get selected because it isn't paying the rates that people can get elsewhere for other work. So that's part of it as well.
Is psychology a business or a profession?
Most psychologists are small business people working in private practice. And yes, it is a profession, but just like doctors would, and GPs and other doctors are in a vocation, they're also business people, as are lawyers.
What's your definition of a profession?
This is a tricky philosophical question. I think it's, for me, for me, it's about people who have a a commitment to working in a particular kind of area to do it to the best of their ability, because they believe it's for the benefit of the community.
Can I, in the time that's available, turn now to ongoing education and professional development? And this touches on both Proposition 3 and Proposition 10. And Dr Burgess, you've provided the Royal Commission with a list of resources and training material in Appendix A and Appendix B to your statement. And as I understand it, there is a mandatory ongoing professional development obligation that attaches to any psychologist who wishes to renew her registration year on and year out. Is that right?
That's correct.
And Ms Phillips, does the board have any role in setting out what the ongoing CPD obligations are if somebody wants to maintain their registration?
Yeah, so this points to the recency of practice requirements under the national law. So 30 hours are required each year to be undertaken by a psychologist so that they annually declare that they've completed those hours. 10 of those hours must be on peer supervision, so reflections on their own practice. And the remaining 20 are strongly recommended to be active forms of supervision where they have the opportunity to develop a learning plan that identifies where there might be gaps in their knowledge or whether they might need to refresh their skills. And then they align their continuing professional development activities to that learning plan.
So of those 30 hours, there's no mandatory requirement to spend one or more of the hours looking at cognitive disability as an area for ongoing training and development? Is that right?
Correct. It is required to be in relation to their competencies that they've achieved at time of registration, both general and or area of practice endorsement, and also their recency of practice. So an example might be in the area, let's say, a psychologist changed work roles and moved into an area where they're regularly completing assessments for learning disabilities. They've identified that they haven't administered one of our core psychometric tests for some time. And so it would be reasonable to expect that they would undertake a focused effort to refresh their skills and to be able to demonstrate that if required through an audit process.
Are there any areas at all that you require people to specifically focus on to complete the 30 hours? Is there any prescribed areas at all?
No, it just has to relate to psychological practice. So it needs to be defensible in terms of how it relates to them as a regulated health profession and as a psychologist. If they have an area of practice endorsement, 15 hours must be, so half of that must be dedicated to that area of practice endorsement.
Mr Carpenter, sorry, you've been silent while I've covered Proposition 7. In terms of your experience from the accreditation side, do you have any views on the ongoing training for psychologists in practice? Is that something that you turn your mind to in looking at the accreditation of courses?
It's a little bit beyond the scope of what we do. What we do is limited really to looking at the training of staff within the higher education providers delivering the programmes. So there is some requirement within the standards for the higher education provider to demonstrate their supporting continued professional development. But there are no specific requirements in terms of what that looks like, very much as Rachel's described.
And, and Dr Burgess, is it the case that if a person specializes in sports psychology for rugby league players, that the 30 hours of ongoing training and development could all be about psychology and rugby league? Is that possible? And nothing else? Is that how it works in practice?
In terms of the learning plan for professional development that we provide to our members, it covers three areas. It covers theoretical knowledge relevant to your work, practical knowledge relevant to your work and ethical considerations relevant to your work. So yes, it could be about rugby, but it would need to cover those three areas. And part of your supervision work with your active learning work would be to look at how that applies to other settings and other parts of work. So learning in one place, how it could be applied in others.
Is there any incentive for psychologists who have a particular field of practice to step outside that field of practice and increase their general knowledge in psychology? So for example, take the example I've given you of the sports psychologist specialising in rugby. Is there any incentive to step outside that particular area and look at other areas of psychological practice?
I can only tell you what I've seen over 30 years of psychologists and their behaviour. And that's that they are intellectually curious and do. There is a great thirst of learning in the profession and they're always looking for ideas from other parts of psychology that they can use to apply to their own practice. So there is no compulsion, but there is a professional set of behaviours that seem to lead to that.
And while 30 hours of CPD sounds very important, would it be the case that as a psychologist becomes more and more specialised in her or his particular areas, that the opportunity to come back and to review, to update and to develop an expertise in working with people with cognitive disability becomes more and more limited the more and more specialised a person becomes?
I think that psychology is such a broad area, there are always things to learn. You may be. You may become quite specialised in one small area, but there are other areas one always needs to learn about. So I think Rachel perhaps would comment on that, but I would say that learning is, is an ongoing process for most psychologists.
Ms Phillips, I suppose I've asked this question because
Yes.
um, listening to your evidence this afternoon, if we don't capture the psychologists at the entry level on cognitive disability, once they take a clinical placement, and that might be the area in which they remain for their profession, they might not ever have the opportunity to work with or to develop the skills to care for people with cognitive disability. Is that right?
So would it be possible for me to just very quickly outline a piece of reform that the Board is undertaking in relation to part of your question?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, Council. So all psychologists in Australia are on the general register. So they are actually generally registered before they even consider completing a training in area of practice endorsement. So that means at time of entry into the profession, they are fit for practice and competent to work in a diverse set of roles. If they choose to continue on to complete an area of practice endorsement, it does stand to reason that they will want to work in that area. But that does not remove the requirement for them to work within their individual competence, which is a combination of their training, their recency of practice, and their continuing professional development. So I, I, I think that it's a little bit, while we've made the link strongly about clinical placements, I think what we've also heard from multiple stakeholders is that there's a requirement to simplify and strengthen the registration categories for psychologists in Australia. So the Board has been undertaking some reform to actually make it easier for someone to become a psychologist, but also to make it easier for the community to understand what type of services they need and want and how to access them. And one of those is actually just to really clarify the general registration competencies, which I think is where the most benefit is going to be for people with cognitive disability.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioners. I have no further questions. The Commissioners may have some questions, so will the panelists.
Yes, thank you. Again, I'll ask Commissioner Galblay, do you have any question?
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkinson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bennett, thank you. I'll just ask the Council who are appearing today whether anyone has any questions of this panel.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
No, no, thank you, Chief.
In that case, thank you very much, Mr Carpenter, Ms Phillips, Dr Burgess, for coming to give evidence today and assisting us both with the statements that you have prepared and your oral evidence today. We appreciate your assistance, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Can we take a short break now?
The next, the next panel is the dental panel. So we just need a very short adjournment of a minute or so just to reconstitute the panels. Thank you.
Right. We'll take a break. It's now just after two, we'll take a break, on to, we'll take a break until five past two Sydney time, five past one Brisbane time.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mrs, oh, I'm terribly sorry.
Yes.
Um, Commissioners, the Royal Commission will now hear evidence from a dental panel consisting of Professor Robert Love, the Chair of the Australian Australasian Council of Dental Schools, Dr Mark Hutton, President of the Australian Dental Association, Ms Norrell Mills, the Chief Executive Officer of the Australian Dental Council, and Professor Heian No, the Dean and Head of School of the University of Western Australia Dental School. The panel will focus on Propositions One, Two, Six, Eight, and Eleven. There are six registered professions under the National Registration and Accreditation Scheme. Our focus is on dentists, who are the primary providers of dental services to the community. I won't list the other dental professions, but they all form part of the dental team led by a dentist. At December twenty twenty, there were twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four registered dental practitioners in Australia, of which eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six were dentists. To become a registered dentist generally involves four years of graduate study or up to five years of undergraduate study. And specialising involves further postgraduate study, and that will be the subject of evidence shortly. In public hearing four, just briefly, the Commission heard evidence that dental problems and gum disease are common among people with intellectual disability, and of the significant risks to health they present, including feeding issues, nutritional deficiencies, and increased risk for respiratory and other diseases. That evidence came primarily from Professor Julian Trolle, official visitors to group homes, carers of people with intellectual disability, and specialist dentist Dr Richard Zylan and Mr Nathan Despot of Inclusion Melbourne. Before calling upon the panel, we wish to remind the Commissioners of some evidence from Ms Sabrina Monahan during public hearing four. Her son has a cognitive disability and complex health needs, and she spoke about issues and poor experiences accessing dental services at a community dental clinic for him in February at public hearing four. So we will play two short one-minute extracts now.
The good healthcare is person-centred and individualised.
That's correct.
And treating AAL first and foremost as a person and respecting him as an individual who understands and comprehends what is happening is important.
That's correct.
Is that the, the number one starting point?
Of course it is, it has to be, because, you know, you can listen to the patient's advocate and you can listen to them if they're able to communicate their needs. You know, spending time observing behaviours is often a clue of what that person is feeling. And, you know, if they're fidgeting around or, you know, starting to stim a lot, that's obviously a sign they're becoming dysregulated. So land plenty of time for a consultation to occur and just give that person some breathing space. Because quite often, transition is a huge issue for a lot of people with autism, whether it's, you know, from school to home, but it could also be, you know, quite micro sort of managed within an environment, someone getting up and leaving, an object being moved on a table because they like things where they seem to think they like things. So all those little nuances can tick them off, and little things are big things to them.
And you think that medical, dental, and nursing staff are probably given very little education or training regarding managing people with disability, let alone specific training in autism?
Correct.
And so one of your suggestions is that there needs to be some training, but not just the technical know-how, but also improvement in the attitude and the mindset of clinicians, is that right?
Yeah, I think some, you know, hands-on practical experience, whether working in, you know, a residential, residential care setting or a special needs school, I think that would be really warranted. And I think the social model of disability care needs to be imprinted on medical training as well. So they're not looking at from a medical model, you know, just to assume that, you know, they can be cured or, you know, that sort of thinking.
Professor Love, could you please state your full name for the Commission?
Robert Matthew Love.
And you are the Chair of the Australasian Council of Dental Schools?
That's correct.
Is ACODs the peak academic body in Australia for dental education and research?
Yes, it is.
Are there nine universities offering degrees leading to eligibility to apply for registration as a dentist in Australia?
Yes, there are nine in Australia, yes.
And a number of other universities and bodies, including TAFE, offering qualifications in the other dental professions, such as oral health therapy?
Yeah, there are a number of other ones. ACODs has four other representatives from other, from TAFs or other universities that are solely providing education at the therapy or hygiene level.
And so ACODs members include all of the education providers providing courses of study leading to any of the dental professions? That is not just limited to dentists?
No, it's not limited to dentists, no, it's got the other professions as well.
See, um, thank you. You're also the Head of School in the School of Dentistry and Oral Health at Griffith University. Is that the case?
That's correct.
Thanks. And Dr Hutton, if you could state your full name for the record, please? Can you hear me, Dr Hutton?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Robert Mark Hutton.
Thank you. And you're the President of the Australian Dental Association?
That's correct.
Is the ADA the peak national body for dentists and dental students?
Yes, it is.
Do you practise dentistry in South Australia?
I do.
And you've been actively involved in the ADA, both in the federal executive level and in the South Australian branch for many years, is that the case?
That's correct.
Approximately what proportion of dentists are members of the ADA?
Approximately seventy per cent of Australians dentists are members of the ADA.
Thank you. Ms Mills, if you could please state your name for the record?
Norrell Leanne Mills.
And you're the Chief Executive Officer of the Australian Dental Council?
That's correct.
Is the Australian Dental Council the accreditation authority for the dental professions under the National Registration and Accreditation Scheme?
Yes, it is.
Does the council have responsibility for accrediting the various education and training programmes leading to registration, as well as in developing and setting the standards for dental practitioner programmes?
Yes, that's correct.
And you have previous experience in the health education and accreditation sectors more broadly beyond dentistry?
Yes, I was formerly the CEO of the Australian Physiotherapy Council prior to this role.
Thank you. Professor No, if you could please state your name, your full name?
My full name is Heian Chee No.
And you are the Dean and Head of School of the University of Western Australia?
That's correct.
Dental School? And the Director of the Dental Hospital associated with the university, which is called the Oral Health Centre of Western Australia, is that the case?
That's correct.
Um, the UWA Dental School is the only tertiary training institution for dentists and dental specialists in Western Australia, is that so?
That's correct.
Um, UWA offers a graduate entry-level Doctor of Dental Medicine, the DMD, which is a four-year degree, is that the case?
That's correct.
And the Oral Health Centre attached to the university provides a training ground for the students in clinical practice, is that the case?
Yes, you are correct. But on top of that, it acts as a tertiary referral centre for the public dental health services.
Referrals are made to the centre?
Yes. So if a patient needs special, specialist care, they will come to the centre.
Okay. And special needs dentistry is not currently one of the areas of specialty provided at that facility?
We provided a limited service in respect to special needs dentistry.
Okay, limited in what sense?
We're starting with just having, seeing patients who are referring down to us from the medical hospital because they have medical complications, and we have a unit providing service for those patients.
I see. And is that, when you say it's limited, is it a limited range of interventions? Or is it limited, is it part-time in terms of the service or what we're not? Or is it limited, is it part-time in terms of the service or what, in what sense is it?
It is part-time for the time being, one day a week, and we're looking at expanding that in the near future.
I see. For the benefit of everyone watching, it may be of assistance to define what special needs dentistry. It's a particular expression in the dental sphere, is it not? It's defined, Mark Hutton, by the ADA and the Royal Australasian College of Dental Surgeons as dentistry that supports the oral healthcare needs of people with an intellectual disability, comma, medical, physical or psychiatric conditions that require special methods or techniques to prevent or treat oral health problems or where such conditions necessitate special dental treatment plans. Is that the recognised definition of special needs dentistry?
This is correct.
Professor No, as the university, the university doesn't offer a training programme in special needs dentistry, is that the case, consistent with the scope of practice of the Oral Health Centre?
Not at the specialist level. We are developing one.
I see. And you're hoping to introduce a particular degree, a postgraduate degree, commencing in 2024 in special needs dentistry? Is that the case?
That is the case.
Presently, students wanting to go on to specialise in special needs dentistry have to access the postgraduate programmes in the universities of Sydney, Melbourne, Queensland or Adelaide?
That is correct.
In terms of the primary level degree, which is the graduate DMD at the University of Western Australia, what is the exposure students can obtain to patients with cognitive disabilities during their four-year degree?
During their four-year degree, there are three ways they can be exposed to. So we're focusing, starting exposing them in year three and year four, the last two years of the course. So they start with lectures, didactic teaching in the course. Then they attend communication workshops where actors will come in and guide them how to apply the head knowledge that they just acquired, how to apply that when communicating with people with more difficulty. Then we, they have to complete clinical placement within the clinics of the dental health services, the public health clinics. And then we give them also observational placement. So in the previous placement, they actually treat patients. And then this observational placement, they only come and do observation.
And are those clinical placements, are they for two weeks in the final year of their degree at the Fiona Stanley Hospital and then one additional day at the Shalom Coleman Special Needs Clinic?
That is correct.
What evaluation of the learning outcomes is made of those clinical placements? And against what standards are the students assessed in terms of cognitive disability?
Our students do regular rotation in their final year into other clinics outside of the school. And we have a framework to provide standard assessment and feedback from supervisors. So we appoint people who work in those clinics as supervisors and they will try to standardise what and how they assess. So we have a framework that they have to follow.
Are the students' skills or competencies in caring for patients with cognitive disabilities evaluated and tested?
That was one component of the full spectrum of assessment.
And how does that occur? What is the form of the evaluation?
Every clinical session that they attend to, that assessment is done in every session. So if they have done 10 sessions involving this special clinic and they have done 100 sessions in a standard clinic, then that will be proportionally going to be considered as the overall performance.
How does the university currently access expertise in the area of special needs dentistry for teaching and developing its curriculum?
It's very difficult at the moment because WA, in Perth, we don't have a local training school. So a lot of general practitioners with special interests in it will train themselves up and act as the main service provider in this area. And that's the reason why we want to develop a proper training programme so that we can, people don't have to go interstate to get a specialty recognition for, you know, before they come back and provide the service.
Does the university, or the dental school rather, involve people with cognitive disability in, at all in the development of the curriculum or its evaluation or delivery?
At the moment, it's very limited. And we recognise that being a, you know, that's something that we will work on to get more engagement in the future.
One of the propositions which the commission is looking at, Proposition Two, I wonder if that could be brought up on the screen? You may have it in front of you, Professor No, that proposes the active involvement of people with cognitive disability in the development, evaluation and delivery of curriculum. What do you say of Proposition Two? Is that something that you agree with and consider that there would be potential for the university to seek to ensure that in the future?
Definitely, this can be implemented where we can engage into this sort of activity. However, at an institutional level, we have to give freedom and flexibility on how to implement it. But we have a good intention that, yes, this is a good idea. And you notice that currently, we already have workshop, communication workshop, where people with disability actually come in and train our student. So allow them to practise in communication already. So it's not like it's non-existent, but I acknowledge that it is a good method to engage in it.
Professor Love, you have said at, I think, paragraph nine of your statement that the involvement of people with cognitive disability is not a feature of dental or oral health curricula presently. But ACODs does see value in that being introduced. Do we take it then that you would agree with Proposition Two? Which was just on the screen and it could be brought back up if needs be?
That's okay, remember. Yeah, yes, we would be supportive of that. At the moment, we, you know, we have to abide by one of the Australian Dental Council's accreditation standards, which requires us to have community input into all our training programmes. And so that would easily fit into that standard. Of course, we have quite a few other communities that would have to partake in that as well.
How could that work be done in a way that ensured that it was meaningful and not just a tick-the-box exercise?
Well, we would have to report and prove, demonstrate that it actually has been done to the ADC as part of the accreditation process. I would imagine that most people, most schools will set up, for want of a better word, a committee, which would include members of the profession, other key stakeholders like employers, as well as the community membership, with terms of reference that, again, which are fairly well stipulated by the ADC that they have to be involved with development and monitoring of programmes, so the curriculum and programmes. So I imagine most schools would have, most schools do have some sort of committee that does that. But it would be a formal committee that would then report into the school to implement them. And then again, we have to report to the ADC to prove that we are meeting that standard.
Ms Mills, is the involvement of people with disability in curriculum development and/or delivery something that the Australian Dental Council looks at when accrediting dental programmes?
Yes, thank you. I think the introduction of the new accreditation standards that came into effect from the 1st of January 2021 are much stronger on this point. This is our criteria 2.2, which, I'll paraphrase, used to say must have external input to the programme and to the curriculum design. But now goes to the explicit level of requiring consumer, bracket, patients' input into the curriculum design. So from the 1st of January, those standards are much stronger in what the ADC will be looking for in its accreditation and monitoring of programmes ongoing. It's probably not sufficient anymore to just have an external advisory group, which was the general and usual way programmes would be seeking that feedback. I would be seeking to see in evidence interactions, particularly with patients, consumers and families into the public sector that goes back into the programme design, et cetera. So a much more system linkage of the different ways in which consumers can have a voice into the curriculum.
Would you necessarily be looking in the consumer area for input from people with disability? Consumers could be a broad range of people. Would you be looking for the voice of people with disabilities in that?
I think the ADC would be looking for that. We would be looking for a broad range of consumer voices. So people with disability, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voices, rural remote populations. The schools and the placement of those schools are, they should be integrated within the community that the students are working in. So we're looking for a broad representation of the community with which that programme is servicing through the students and through the practitioners that they're going to be developing at the end.
But I take it there's no guidelines underpinning the accreditation standards which specifically require that the voice of people with disability be included in the consumer input on curriculum?
It doesn't explicitly state in the standards or in the guidance notes who needs to be the voice of the consumer in that. No, you're right.
If I could ask you all about Proposition One, which is about a competency framework for health professionals, including for dental practitioners, and the relevance of that for dental practitioners. Professor Love, you have said in your statement at paragraph seven that disability is covered sufficiently in curricula where education providers comply with the ADC accreditation standards. For that view, are you relying on the mere fact of accreditation? Or are there other considerations which support your view that it is currently sufficiently covered?
Accreditation's the main one, but we've all, all the schools have implemented a curriculum which addresses a competency-type framework when it comes to the special needs area. It probably, between schools, it won't be the same. Probably the outcomes at the end will be the same, but the actual, how everyone gets there would be different. So, you know, we cover it all in our special needs teaching. So all the schools will have that within their undergraduate programme or the pre-registration programme of dentists. And also that will flow through to oral health therapists and hygienists as well. Also paediatric training as well. There's a heavy influence on any disabilities from paediatric because that's generally when, you know, a practitioner will initially start to see patients who need those requirements. So within what's done within the general curriculums all around the country, that there is a framework that does address it. We of course base our framework on that international standard as well. For example, you know, like you can go to the UK and see what their standards is for in the special professional bodies. So we base it on those international benchmarks. So we do probably a lot of didactic teaching in it. The clinical teaching is, would be variable across the country because it really depends on how we, the patient pools between each of the various schools and where the patient's coming from. So most of the patients would probably be seen within like a state service, like for example here in Queensland, Queensland Health, and via the hospital service. So it is a bit sporadic on the clinical aspects of treating patients. But all schools send their final year students either on rural placements. For example, Queensland, like we send them out for six months into Queensland-run facilities where they can get exposed to the different patients. So that's one of the areas that we do. We're very keen and strong in doing that. And so all schools have some sort of outplacement into the health system.
When you said there is an existing framework, what do you mean by that? Is there actually a written framework setting out the competencies required in special needs dentistry?
Yes, yes, you'll be able to find international ones within each school. Whoever's running the programme, the programme in special needs dentistry, the course in special needs dentistry, will have the various competencies required and mapped against what learning outcomes to do. Again, that's a requirement for the ADC accreditation, that we have to have competencies and then map how we measure them.
Just in relation to those competencies, Ms Mills, we've referred to the accreditation standards, which I note commissioners are at TAB 28, 26B of the hearing folder. The Dental Council has also developed what's called professional competencies that new graduates are expected to meet. And the dental schools are required to, in effect, teach the professional competencies at the same time as complying with the accreditation standards. Is that how it works?
That's correct. The accreditation standards are the programme standards, so the structure of the programme. The competencies are what the learning outcomes need to be mapped to. So programmes have to demonstrate how they are achieving the graduate outcomes in their curriculum.
There are no disability-specific competencies in the professional competencies document, nor the standards?
They're not specifically referenced, you're correct. The curricula of all of the programmes, and you do have two very skilled heads of school here, is a vertically and horizontally integrated curriculum. So when we talk about communication and interprofessional education and patient-centred care, they're the foundations in the early years of the programme that we're referencing back in the competencies around preparing dental students for practice with complex cases such as people with disability.
The professional competencies have six domains. They are set out at TAB 26D, commissioners. The competencies have six domains comprising professionalism, communication and leadership, critical thinking, health promotion, scientific and clinical knowledge and patient care. Just taking two of those, Ms Mills, communication and leadership, which is page 11 of the competencies, sets out the need for dental practitioners to be able to communicate and engage with patients. and engage with patients, present clear information, and I won't read out the whole lot, but there does not seem to be anything about dealing with patients with communication impairments.
That's correct. And the the competencies, the competencies that you're referring to came into effect in two thousand and sixteen and are currently under review in twenty twenty one. There were some items or areas of focus that came up in the accreditation standards review that came into effect in January that do relate to competencies more than accreditation standards. So what you're referring to in terms of communication with people with cognitive disability will be considered in the revision of the competencies this year.
The competencies are currently dated two thousand and sixteen, and are they reviewed on a five-yearly cycle?
Yes, they're usually reviewed in a set with the accreditation standards and the competencies so that they remain contemporaneous for what is needed in the population.
And one of the other areas of interest in terms of a potential competency framework is the need for health professionals to make adjustments to their standard practices in delivering clinical care. Is it fair to say that is not an area addressed currently in the professional competencies? And I'm particularly referring to domain six under patient care. There doesn't appear to be a competency dealing with adapting standard practices.
I think it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily use that terminology. But you're correct, it doesn't actually refer to the adjustments.
Is that an area that you'd expect to be reviewed in the forthcoming review of the competencies?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you agree, Professor Love, that the professional competencies could better address the specific needs of people with cognitive disability?
Yes, I think as you've, as you've clarified, that they could probably be a bit more detailed on that. But I think the principle the A D C adapted back when they were done, it was enabling for education providers to be able to to do, to design and deliver programs and not be too prescriptive. If I can briefly say, when you go through into accreditation, the 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 people who are doing accreditation are very experienced and they know exactly what should be in a dental curriculum. And if the things are missing, what they expect, so if you imagine if they never didn't see anything that had special needs dentistry in the curriculum, that would be, that would be highlighted in the in the report. And I would imagine that the A D C would then make a a condition that that should be in the in the in the program. So I think, yeah, those those standard, everything involves, so I think that what you say would clarify that area.
Yeah, if if it's, if it's not, if it's not referred to, however, one couldn't be confident that it would be covered in the accreditation process. Would you agree with that? I mean, I think you refer to it as a matter of detail or prescription, but those topics don't appear to be dealt with at all.
Yeah, I I guess technically, because if it's not, if it's not specified, then it could be overcome but overlooked. As a, as a, as I mentioned, people who are doing the accreditation, they know what they're supposed, they need to see in a curriculum. And and if they don't see it, then they will, they'll they'll mention it.
Professor Love, do you think that a nationally agreed competency framework, or at least a competency framework agreed by all the relevant stakeholders in terms of dental education would assist the universities to determine if their course content is sufficient?
Yes, A C O D is very, very keen on having national standards with with a number of the aspects of dental education. For example, we at this, at the moment, we're working on the national standard for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islands. So we will have a, we'll have a standard that will be applicable to the whole country, which will, which will feed into the A D C requirements. So, yeah, so we're very keen to have everything, have a national curriculum. We do it in some aspects of dentistry, for example, keriology, which is tooth, tooth, tooth decay. It's pretty much, it's a standardized curriculum across the country, because we, we have various subgroups that look at that and other associations and say, this is what should be in a contemporary curriculum. So, yeah, we're very, we're very keen and happy to have national standards. They would, they'd have to be fairly high. Dentistry would be fine, but if it was also spreading into other professions, like medicine and nursing and that, they would probably work better if there were higher, higher level standards, then we could, we could say, yes, we can do this in this aspect here. But to have detailed ones for multiple, to cover multiple professions, maybe, maybe a little bit more difficult for us to manage.
You, you've said in your statement that you see value, or A C O D sees value in working with a national organization in this area to to ensure that key learning outcomes are valid and appropriate. What sort of national organization are you referring to and how in your view, could a competency framework be developed and who would, who would be involved and indeed who would lead that work? There's a number of questions in there.
So I guess the, I guess the, we'd be looking for a peak body who could to to tell us what's required in a, yeah, a curriculum outside of dentistry. So I guess we'd be looking at association that would represent patients in that area. And if A C O D was running it, then we would set up a very, we'd set up committee, we'd probably have representatives from each school and then have the those experts from outside A C O D to to feed in and then develop a a framework which would be completely familiar to all members of A C O D and all dental educators and how the, how a framework should look, how you can roll it out within that, within a program. But so if we were doing, that's probably the way we would do it. Not sure whether the higher, hi, you know, someone like APRA could, could, could do it, but again, it may be just, it may be trying to cover off too many professions in one, trying to get one, one area there. Again, it would, if you're doing that, it has to be very high level curriculum, not down into detail there.
Okay, so you you see a role for A C O Ds to potentially lead that work as opposed to the Accreditation Authority or the Dental Board?
Yes, well, we, and I think, I won't speak for A D C, but I I think we, you know, we prefer to to develop with, we're the peak educators, we're the one that know how to educate. So we'd be the ones who'd be keen to be involved in in running that. I don't think, I don't speak for A D C, but A D C doesn't necessarily want to get into prescribing curricula. And also the Dental Board as well. It's probably not in their, their remit. But we, we would, we would, we would work with those bodies, like we're working with the A D C on the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander curriculum, we've worked, but we're doing it, we're doing it aside, and then we, for example, we'll present it to the A D C and see whether it meets their requirements. So that's the sort of thing that we could do.
And Professor No, what is your view about a proposed competency framework that identifies core required skills for dental practitioners dealing with patients who have cognitive disabilities?
I'm, I'm of a view that it got to be spelled out, rather than assuming that people would do it because you already have a standard. So a workshop of some form to look at how it can be implemented at a school level. Then, like Robert had said, we can then go back to APRA Dental Board and say, well, this is what we propose to do. What is your interpretation that fit in with the standard that that you are governing? So but definitely, instead of saying that it's fitting to some, some general framework of competency, I would actually mention the group so that we can stay focused in there.
And you've identified in your statement some areas where the dental school is proposing to introduce additional content on the dental and oral health care of patients with cognitive disabilities. Has that been identified as a consequence of a curriculum review or in answer to the commission's request for a statement? Or how how was that?
No, that, that was a piece of work that's going to happen anyway, before the Royal Commission called us for submission. We recognize that there's a gap as far as special needs dentistry is in in our education system because we don't have a specialist training program in that. So I have been consulting with the public health system together with the hospital around us. And just to give you an idea, our centre is located in the main medical district of Perth. So Children Hospital, Women Hospital, all the general hospital, major hospital we have around us here. So we want to relook at that and say, if we actually can allocate more time, how can we best use those time?
So Professor No, you were talking about introducing a postgraduate course in special needs dentistry, but now you're talking about integrating it into the undergraduate degree as well. Is that what you're talking about now?
Yeah, that's, that's right. We see that our education is vertically and horizontally integrated. So somebody can start in the undergraduate, can start with the undergraduate program, grow an interest into the field of special needs and then do some work in our hospital to gain more experience, consolidate that interest. Then one day decided I want to become a specialist. So here there's another specialist training program that they can join.
And Professor No, no doubt you've looked at the other universities that offer the postgraduate training in special needs dentistry, and do they have the same vertical pattern that students get more training in their undergraduate degree in dealing with people with cognitive disability, then it moves into the postgraduate degree?
Yeah, I, I have a confession to make. I have been working in the Middle East for the last eight years and only just returning to Australia in the last seven months. So I'm not very familiar with what the other dental school are doing. However, you know, we have some very keen young individuals who have their heart into this area, and that's why we've been discussing in our school, how can we help them develop it further?
So Professor No, you're probably very grateful you were allowed back into Western Australia.
I think all the staff were aligned for me to come back at the right time.
Indeed, thank you.
And Miss, Dr, Dr Hutton, if I could bring you in. You've provided the Royal Commission with a range of policy statements made by the A D A on a range of areas, including the oral health care of people with disabilities as well as education and training. It's the A D A's policy position that education and training must match the oral health needs of the community. Is that the case? That's, I'm referring to your policy statement two point one, National Oral Health.
That's correct.
And in your statement, you say that the A D A has long advocated for dental schools to provide more education on the oral and dental care of older Australians and those with disability through their programs. There are currently, as you note in your statement, only twenty registered specialists practicing in this area of special needs dentistry in the entire country. That number seems to have gone up by only five since two thousand and fourteen. That indicates that the majority of dental care for this group of the population is provided by general dental practitioners. That's a fair statement?
Yes, I think so. Of course, there's a range of, of needs those patients. And so some of the patients who who general practitioners feel competent to treat, of course, they would go ahead and treat. And some, many general practitioners become very, very schooled and develop their skills in treating special needs patients. But in the end, there's often a need to refer to a special needs dentist.
Does that tend to underscore the need to address the skills and the competencies required in cognitive disability at the undergraduate or graduate level, given that so few generalists are going on to postgraduate study?
I'm sorry, sorry, I don't quite, quite understand your question.
Well, does that, the fact that there is an extremely low number of specialists at special needs dentistry and that the bulk of the care is provided by general dentists, does that highlight the need to be training generalists at, in their primary degree on the health, the dental health of people with cognitive disability because they're not going on and getting those additional skills during postgraduate study?
Yes, it's very, very important that that dentists graduate with those, with those skills. And so, you know, we would, we would certainly very happy to see undergraduates receiving, receiving good education in 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 treating patients with special needs. There will always be cases, though, as there are in all fields of dentistry, where there'll be a need to refer when the treating dentist assesses that the that the problem they have in front of them is greater than what they can, what they can treat.
Is a dentist who does not have an interest in special needs dentistry or a specialization, and there's no universal dental care in Australia, is that dentist free not to accept or see a patient with an intellectual disability?
Well, I think, I mean, every, every, every patient, every patient that, a dentist needs to assess the treatment of every patient they see and decide upon whether or not they believe they have the necessary skills to treat them. And that's with, with, with everything that that patients come in with. So so every dentist needs to assess, assess every patient they see. And if they feel they can treat the patient, then, you know, obviously they go ahead and head and treat them. If they feel that, that the the treatment exceeds, you know, their ability to provide safe and and effective and good treatment for the patient, then they, then they, they would refer.
How do they do that when there is, there are only twenty special needs dentistry specialists, specialist dentists in the country? How do general dentists either know about appropriate referral pathways or find appropriate training or resources that might assist them so that they can be equipped to provide the care themselves?
Yeah, no, I, so all, all, well, I assume all practicing dentists in Australia would, would have a referral pathway to a special, special needs dentist. You know, it's, it's, it's well known in in each state who those, who those dentists are. They're, every, every dentist who graduates, of course, tends to have, have interests that they develop. And many would, and many dentists develop an interest in, in treating special needs patients and upskill themselves to, to be able to, to treat many of them. The advice is always available. If, if, often if a dentist had a, had a, you know, a special needs patient, and particularly if you're in a rural and remote area and don't have an easy path to referral, everyone, you know, tends to pick up a telephone and talk to someone to to get advice. So so there, there are um to um to get advice. So, so there, there are plenty of pathways and plenty of advice uh available, um, available for dentists, I think.
Well, that, that, that's, that's a positive, but the ADA um has very clear policy statements. Um, does it not that um federal, state and territory government schemes for public funding of um oral health services are underfunded? And that um there is um unmet need in the community for the treatment of individuals in disadvantaged groups, uh which is, and the ADA has a clear definition of that, including people with physical or mental um disabilities. Um, as well as policy statements that individuals with disabilities are entitled to the same level of access um to oral healthcare services. Um, so while I think you've said general dentists do have referral pathways, is access to dental healthcare by people with cognitive disabilities a real problem in Australia?
Uh, I would think it would be. I don't know what the quantity of uh of of that problem or the size of that problem is. And I don't know that there's been a huge amount of work done to actually assess uh assess that need. And and it would be really good to see um some really good data on on what the real need is. Um, yeah.
Hmm. Um, I I think we're pressed for time, Commissioners. Might I just deal with one, one extra proposition? If I'm allowed, um, a proposition eleven, um, just to get your views, perhaps Dr Hutton? Um, if that could be brought up on the screen. Um, this is a proposition which is um proposing um a strengthening of opportunities for health professionals to access training and resources. Um, establishing repositories for um health professionals to be able to access training resources and tools regarding providing healthcare to people with cognitive disabilities. Um, being realistic about it, one can always say things are a good idea, but is that something that is feasible and needed among dental practitioners?
Well, it's, it's certainly needed and and one would, one would hope it was um, hope it was feasible. Um, one of the uh, so right, uh, right now, though, there is a bit of a disconnect between primary health uh uh networks and dentistry. Because dentistry uh isn't part of the Medicare system, so there are no linkages between the primary healthcare uh networks and dentists. So although we, or the ADA is is currently um um engaging with the Department of Health roundtable discussions um on access and quality of dental services for people with intellectual disabilities. So um we hope that could be developed.
Um, thank you. Those are my questions, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Galvall, do you have any questions?
Um, I'd like to ask Professor Love and Professor No. I was very taken by the clinic that you're establishing at the University of Western Australia, Professor No, or whether it's already done. And it's because considering the issue of access, which is, sounds really um very, you know, difficult in this area. Um, that's one way to get a little bit more access. So Professor Love, is that, is that going to happen in all dental schools? And would that be an issue for your organisation to to promote that and ensure that that's part of all dental schools? Because that'd be another way of getting more access at least.
Uh, yes, well, we would like to have more access to um uh patients with disability. Uh, it may not necessarily have to be within the dental school. It would be also um doing out placements to the, for example, just say Queensland Health, because that's where where I am. Uh, because, you know, that, that's where most of the patients uh are seen. There's not a lot of patients seen in private practice, I don't believe. Uh, it's mainly seen in those centres. So um, so uh those are right placements there. The, the major thing about also patients with disability, it it's not just uh like having a a specific teaching clinic, like a, a teaching clinics would not be appropriate for people with disability. It has to be more of a a one-on-one room um rather than in an open clinic of say six, six paces or whatever like that. So that's why it's better if it it could, could be done in partnership with one of the the state uh run, run clinics. Um, ju- just recapping, we, we believe that, you know, the dent- dentists who come, come out with the basic competencies ha- have the ability to do what Mark mentioned before, but be able to examine, assess and decide whether they can manage a patient and therefore refer off and that would either be special needs or or paediatrics as well. Paediatrics are well versed, paediatric dentists are well versed in managing um children. In fact, they used to before special needs became more of a specialty. And the paediatric dentists often manage the um adults with special needs as well. So that, that's another area there. But if I, if I could just go on to the, that, that training that you've asked about, the, the um into the postgraduate area, there's, there's a particular, you know, there's, there's, there's pinch points that ACOs and other uh other organisations have mentioned quite a while about trying to get more people more into the, into the specialty. So one is having to have the right patients. So you've got to be associated with a, a, a tertiary hospital or big hospital really um to be able to do that. Because not only the patients go there, they've got to have the facilities there. So again, one, a, a single, single operatory. And you may need to have things like um rooms for conscious sedation or general anaesthetic to be able to do that. And and you can't do that in private. And it's increasingly hard to do that within a dental school now because the compliance costs of of running a conscious sedation or a gen- certainly a general anaesthetic um theatre within a dental school is is im- is impossible. So you have to go in uh outside the organisation to do that. So that's one thing about patients. Um, the other one is, we all have problems getting the appropriately trained staff as well. Uh, I just, as you pointed out, there's only twenty registered specialists in the country. Uh, there are a few others who wouldn't be registered specialists, but general dentists who have got a lot of experience in special needs who could do it. But if you're doing a specialty program, then even though the ADC doesn't stipulate it, um, most of the profession require uh someone who's running that program to be a registered specialist in that area. Uh, and so that, that, that causes a little bit of a difficulty, difficulty because we, we don't have many in the country and they're, and they're hard to get. Uh, another thing is trying to attract students into the, into that training. Um, because the nature of the work is going to be based in the public system uh mostly. Uh, I, I, they, they can't, they can't go hundred percent private practice when they, when they, when they specialise because the, the work's not there and the compliance costs, et cetera. So they also have to have a sort of a public appointment into one of the, one of the hospitals or the uh HSSs around the country. So we've always advocated that there should be more um uh input from those HSSs into uh establishing training positions within their establishments, but we can teach into, we can give the academic staff, but they, they're there, they've got the patients and they've got the uh resources um to do it. So we've advocated that for a long time and I know other bodies have as well. Um, otherwise, it's very hard for, for a graduate dentist to start thinking, I want to do special needs dentistry because I've got all these um, these barriers in the way. Um, so that's one area I think would be nice to try and break down some of those barriers.
So as well as proposition eleven, you would um advocate looking at access, looking at all the barriers, that the offering more really fantastic resources through a research centre wouldn't wouldn't resolve the problem of access, that that has to be dealt with as well. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, and yeah, and yeah, and not, and employment opportunities post, post graduation, because, you know, if you take on a three-year specialty program, um, you know, you're talking a lot of private funded fees. It's a big expense. Uh, and then if you have very limited employment prospects at the end of that, uh, it's, it's a deterrent.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Reckonson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
I just quickly, Dr Hutton, um, it, building on what um Professor Love said, your submission also said that ADA recommended that mechanisms should be put in place to encourage increased enrolment in um specialist training. Is there anything that you want to add to the points um Dr Love made that to encourage students or to find a way to increase from twenty-five, is that twenty specialist dentists?
Uh, no, look, I don't think I can add anything to what uh what Professor Love said. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Professor Love, the nine dental schools at universities, are all those in capital cities or some outside capital cities?
It's some, some are rural, uh, for example, Charleston, uh, then uh
That's, that's Bathurst, isn't it?
Yeah, Orange area. Um, there's Latrobe, um, there's Cairns.
Latrobe, I rather thought was in Melville.
Well, that's the sort of North Melbourne, I suppose, yeah.
I think that's, that's east Melbourne, but anyway.
Uh, all those, uh, all those, uh, that, that's, uh, there's Cairns. So, yeah, pretty much capital.
And Howard, talking about access, how are dental services provided to rural and remote areas? And I'm particularly thinking about First Nations people who have relatively high levels of cognitive disability. How, how, how does that work as far as the dental profession is concerned?
I think the, the, the bulk of that uh is done through the HSSs and the, and the various um um self-driven uh clinics that, that some of the uh, the, the people put up. But it's mainly done by HSS, Royal Flying Doctor Service. Um, and um, as a way as um, as, as educators trying to get our final year students out into the outplace, out into the community. And they're the areas that we, we look at to try and find spots to, to, um, to uh place our students. And uh, and again, with the bit of work that we will be doing with the, the new standard from the ADC that we will definitely have to be looking for those areas to, to um, to, to satisfy that. Uh, the, over the country, there's, there's some areas that are doing well there, but it's a little bit, it's a little bit varied there. Um, again, one of the biggest, the biggest problem is it's, it's no use sending really one student out to one very ro- ro- remote area uh for education when you've got a class of a hundred and twenty or whatever like that. So uh our, our problem is trying to make sure that we get an even balance of education across the uh, across the cohort. So um, so you, again, you need the facilities to do that. So you probably, you know, for good efficiency, you probably need at least six dental chairs. We can have six, six to twelve students going out there at any given time. And um, so they'd be assisting each other and uh, and that's a good cost-effective way of uh of providing that, that care. Um.
Okay, but thank you. I, I'm just bearing in mind the time that uh we've, we've come to. I assume that none of the other, the other council appearing today have any questions of the panel?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. In, in, in that case, may I thank all members of the panel who have appeared this afternoon to deal with these issues concerning the provision of dental services to people with cognitive disability. Uh, we appreciate the assistance that you've provided to the commission, including the statements and the evidence you've given today. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. If we could adjourn for five minutes to call the final witness.
Break until uh three sixteen Sydney time, two sixteen Brisbane time.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Esma.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Our final witness this afternoon is Mr Simon Cotrell. And he comes from Canberra. He's asked us just to mention that he's got a stand while he gives his evidence today, which is said perfectly fine from our side. So Mr Cotrell, if there's any discomfort at any stage, can you let me know? And if you need a break, um, please let me know. And thank you very much for um waiting while uh our previous panel ran over time.
And thank you very much for returning to the Royal Commission now to give evidence another time. I'm, I'm sure you've been looking forward to it, Mr Cotrell.
Yes.
So I just want to confirm that you are Simon Brooke Cotrell?
Correct.
And you are the First Assistant Secretary, Primary Care Division with the Commonwealth Department of Health?
That's correct.
And you have provided previous statements to the Royal Commission, including a statement dated five February twenty twenty, in which you set out your professional background in some detail.
Yes.
And for the purpose of this hearing, public hearing ten, you've provided a statement dated twenty-three February twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
And Commissioners, you have a copy of the statement in your hearing bundle for today's hearing at tab forty, and I will be taking Mr Cotrell to the statement. Mr Cotrell, can I ask you whether there are any amendments that you wish to make to your twenty-three February statements?
Um, I'd like to make two uh in paragraph, in paragraph fifteen, which is on page four.
Yes.
Um, uh, the second last word is currently it, and uh I would like to change that to his decision because it was the decision made by the minister, not the department.
Yes, understood.
Thank you. And um in table two, which starts on page five, uh, which is a timetable for completion of the national roadmap. Um, there has been an addition, oh, sorry, apologies. Table one, which starts on page two, um, which is uh, sets out the uh roundtable and targeted group discussion for the national roadmap. Um, an additional discussion on uh dental health has been scheduled for tomorrow, the third of March.
So that would be added in to the table. Do you want to, to add it in between the twenty-fourth of February and the sixteenth of March dates?
Yes, please.
And what would be the correct name or the full name that you want to describe the panel in terms of dental health tomorrow?
Um.
We've got a formal title that you
So uh improving uh the dental health of people with intellectual disability.
And that's scheduled for tomorrow, so we would include the date three March twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
And I assume, Mr Cotrell, that the meeting that was scheduled for the twenty-fourth of February two thousand and twenty-one has in fact been held, has it?
It has.
Yeah, thank you.
So with those um additions and the correction, are the contents of this statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Now, Mr Cotrell, I thought the best way to proceed this afternoon is that there's a number of questions arising out of the statement that you've provided to the Royal Commission. And while the particular interest for this public hearing is education and training of the health profession, you have very kindly responded to the Royal Commission's request for an update on the progress of the national roadmap. And the Commissioners will recall back in February last year that you did give some evidence in relation to the national roadmap. And the department's proposals in advancing that roadmap. And that was at a stage pre-lockdowns and various interruptions to people's lives and work with the COVID nineteen pandemic. One of the matters that you told the Royal Commissioners about back in February last year was that the minister had written to the Medical Deans of Australia and New Zealand, the Council of Deans of Nursing and Midwifery and the Australian Medical Council, seeking to engage these groups as state seeking to engage these groups as stakeholders in the curriculum development in relation to the healthcare and treatment of people with intellectual disability. And to recall that you provided to the Royal Commissioners copies of the minister's correspondence. And also, you told the Royal Commission that the then Chief Medical Officer, Professor Brendan Murphy, had written to the Council of Presidents of the medical colleges to seek their involvement as key stakeholders to enhance medical education and training in relation to the healthcare and treatment of people with intellectual disability. So can I just start in terms of the questions I want to ask you about the roadmap? Was the steps that you were intending to take in relation to the roadmap put on hold throughout the period of the COVID-nineteen pandemic?
The process was put on hold for several months, but I would consider we're still in the pandemic. So it resumed after several months. We stayed in close contact with the sector during that time. Jim Simpson, Julian Troller and others are on the COVID-nineteen Disability Advisory Committee that was meeting very regularly. And when it became apparent that we would start to have capacity to resume this process, we resumed it.
And in terms of bringing together the roundtable that was initially, I think, intended for April last year, that second roundtable didn't occur until the second of November last year, is that right?
That's right. If I could add, the original intention was just to have two roundtables and to complete the work. We've expanded and deepened the level of discussion in this process. So we're heading for three roundtables and a number of targeted discussions.
And the tables that you've just made the addition to in relation to dental health, which you reproduced at paragraph eleven of your statement, that is intended to tell the Royal Commissioners what steps have been taken, including the smaller working groups and their work outside the plenary roundtables, is that right?
That's correct. The targeted discussions were intended to be smaller groups, but in fact have attracted a lot of attention. So they've almost been as big as the roundtable itself.
And the specific smaller group dealing with curriculum development and healthcare for people with intellectual disability occurred on the nineteenth of November last year, is that right?
That's correct.
And that was one meeting that you didn't attend. Susan Wern convened that meeting, is that right?
That's correct.
To the extent that I need to ask you some questions about what happened at the meeting on the nineteenth of November and any outcomes from that meeting, including an issue about whether there was or wasn't consensus. Do you feel equipped to answer the questions in relation to the nineteenth of November meeting?
Yes, on the basis of the documentation only, but those issues have continued to be discussed in other meetings. So I'm happy to try to address them.
All right. So the first thing I want to ask you about progress with the National Roadmap is when you appeared before the Royal Commission in February last year, one question that arose was whether or not people living with autism were included in the National Roadmap or whether it was limited to a specific cohort of people with intellectual disability. And is it right to say that, following your evidence, there has been some consideration given by the department to include people with autism as part of the National Roadmap?
That's correct. If I could draw attention to paragraphs fourteen and fifteen of my statement, which are on page four, I undertook to raise the issue with the minister following that hearing, and the issue was raised with the minister. And the minister decided that we wouldn't be expanding the scope of the National Roadmap for the health of people with intellectual disability process, but that people with autism would be covered to the extent that they have or consider that they have an intellectual disability.
Right. That's what I wanted to ask you, is not all people with autism will necessarily have an intellectual disability. The diagnosis or the way in which a person may describe themselves may be very different. So if we look at your paragraph fourteen and fifteen, is the Royal Commission to understand that it's only people with autism who have intellectual disability?
Correct.
Was that change necessary? Because if a person has an intellectual disability and also has autism, wouldn't they have already been covered?
They would have. I raised it with the minister because I'd undertaken to the Royal Commission to do so.
So really, there hasn't been a full inclusion of people with autism, and there really is no material change because somebody with autism who has an intellectual disability was already part of the roadmap process, is that right?
That's correct. The government has a number of programs that assist, are aimed to assist people with autism, and they have been the subject of a recent elementary inquiry. And the decision was to keep that set of programs separate from this process.
The second thing I wanted to ask you is about paragraph sixteen of your statements. And it may just be that we need some assistance in understanding who the relevant committees and divisions and sections are. So you tell the Royal Commission that in late October last year, the Department of Health Executive Committee decided to provide additional resourcing for the Health and Disability Interface section in your division. Can you explain to us who or what is the Department of Health Executive Committee? And what is the Health and Disability Interface section in your division?
So the Department of Health Executive Committee comprises the secretary and the deputy secretary of the department, and it makes overall decisions on the direction of the department and resourcing decisions. The Health and Disability Interface section in my division was established as a result of a restructure of my division to put resources behind where the government's priorities were.
When did that restructure occur?
In July of twenty twenty. The government appointed a chief allied health officer, Dr. Anne-Marie Boxall, who is one of the branch heads reporting to me. And in her branch, the Allied Health and Service Integration Branch, we established a new section to give more focus to the Health and Disability Interface and a new section to give more focus to allied health. And that was initially a movement of internal resources in my division and then supplemented with some additional resources as a result of the executive committee's decision.
Is the Health and Disability Interface section a section that also works across other departments? I think we've heard your evidence in previous hearings, and one of the issues that arose in public hearing five was the extent to which health and disability were working together or at least aligned in terms of their particular policy objectives. So is it the purpose of the section?
So a major purpose of the section is to work with the Department of Social Services, the National Disability Insurance Agency, the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission, and with disability stakeholder groups to talk about the health needs of people with disability, including people with intellectual disability, and to make sure that we are addressing those needs.
So when you talk about additional resourcing, is that sourcing in the sense of additional staffing within that section?
It was funding for additional staff. Because of the caps on the number of public servants that departments are allowed to employ, that's been put to some additional public servants and some contractors who are assisting with the work.
Next question I had concerns paragraph seventeen, and you've told us that Professor Murphy is now the Secretary of the Department of Health. And on the eighteenth of February this year, he wrote to his counterparts in state and territory health departments, seeking a high-level participation. Why was it that it took until the eighteenth of February this year to reach out to the state and territory health departments to bring them into the process of the development of the National Roadmap?
That wasn't the first time that the state and territory governments had been engaged. Shortly after the first roundtable, the department was approached by a number of state and territory health departments seeking to be involved in the process. And at that time, we agreed that all state and territory health departments could be involved. What we observed over the successive meetings and through the experience of the COVID pandemic was a degree of weariness from all involved. So there was a lot of engagement with all of the state and territory health departments throughout the first few months of the pandemic. They started not to attend at senior levels or in great numbers. So the letter from Professor Murphy was intended to make sure that as we get to the finalization of this process, we have high-level representation from states and territories.
Sorry, I just want to ask a question to clarify. I wasn't quite sure of what word you used. Did you say weariness or wariness?
Weariness. So there's a level of exhaustion that's apparent in these processes because they have been very intense for some time. So.
So at the present time, is the situation with the roadmap that there's been the smaller group meetings, which, as you say, have been growing, there's been some consultations with particular individuals or organisations, for example, Mr. Simpson and the Council for Intellectual Disability? And there's been a questionnaire that's gone out to the stakeholders to get their feedback on where are things up to at the present point in time and what, in effect, is their wishlist going forward? Is that right?
I'm not sure I would describe it as a wishlist, but I think we are in the middle of the process. We tried to resume it in a structured way, and we're trying to get the most out of it that we can.
And so it's a case, isn't it, that the department is working on or may have completed an updated roadmap that you want to take back to the third and final plenary on the thirty-first of March? Is that right?
The department is in the process of developing a revised version of the roadmap in consultation with a small drafting, small informal drafting group. And I draw your attention to paragraphs twenty and twenty-one of my witness statement.
That has a paragraph where you make specific reference to Mr. Simpson and the Council for Intellectual Disability. Has the discussions with respect to the advocacy groups who work in the area of intellectual disability gone beyond just Mr. Simpson and CID? Have you reached out to other organisations or groups?
I'm not sure of the answer to your question, but a large number of organisations have been consulted as part of this process. It's a relatively high-profile process. The discussions are attended by people with disability, their carers, their advocacy organisations. There is very good and broad engagement.
And by the thirty-first of March, is it the case that you intend to present a final version of the roadmap to the final roundtable? And then that would cement the Commonwealth's way forward? There won't be any further changes, is that right?
So we will present what we would hope would be a final draft of the roadmap to the thirty-first of March meeting. That wouldn't be take it or leave it. It would be open to participants to suggest changes to it at that point. But we would want to finish the day with a draft that was acceptable to the group. If we don't have consensus on some issues, it may be that we need to point out different options. But I would hope that we could produce a consensus document. And then that would be for the minister to consider initially and then handing his decisions to the government more broadly.
So if the participants in the roundtable agree on a final version of the roadmap, there's still the step of the minister making a decision as to where the government will commit to the roadmap, is that right?
I think, yes. So one decision is whether to commit to it. Another decision is whether state and territory governments will commit to it. And then there are decisions about funding for implementation.
Because I can see at paragraph twenty-three, table two, is you've identified the period April to June this year to address the decision to implement any further steps, including any continued consultation with the states and territories. Are we right in understanding that between April and June this year is that the Commonwealth is looking to the states and territories to play part of the implementation of the elements of the roadmap? Or is it something else that you're thinking about in that description?
So we've sought to engage the states and territories throughout this process so that they are conscious of what's likely to be in the roadmap and won't have any surprises. And then the issue is escalated to ministerial level. And the reference there is to whether and how the Commonwealth Minister for Health consults his state and territory colleagues on it and seeks their endorsement and/or commitment to implementation.
And the roadmap is likely to have the timeframes in the three areas, so the short term, medium term, and then longer term. There's no intention to depart from that model, is that right?
No, but it has changed slightly since the first draft in a couple of ways. So first, to align it with the primary healthcare ten-year plan, the years are slightly different. So short term is defined as one to three years, medium term is defined as four to six years, and long term is defined as seven to ten. And the second difference is, in the draft outline of the roadmap, whole streams of activity were allocated to either short, medium or long term. And I'm expecting that in further drafts, there will be a better staged implementation where we might be acting across all streams at each time point.
It's a case, isn't it, that there will be arrangements for external oversight of the implementation of the roadmap? And you tell us that in paragraph twenty-five, that's what you anticipate.
Yeah, that's what I anticipate.
Has there been any update since you prepared your statement on the twenty-third of February as to whether you can tell the commission that there will be arrangements for external oversight of the implementation of the roadmap? And if so, what does external oversight mean?
So there haven't been further developments since my statement. The reason I include a little bit of uncertainty about it is because this would be a decision that the minister and potentially other ministers might like to be involved in about what external oversight looks like. But it's my view that we need to have external stakeholders who are committed to this issue, keeping the department energetic and engaged with making sure we implement this roadmap. keeping the department energetic and engaged with making sure we implement this roadmap.
So external does not mean somebody outside the Department of Health, but in somewhere else in the Commonwealth? External means independent? Is that right?
External means the set of stakeholders that we've been consulting on the development of the roadmap. I would expect that some or many of those would be involved in external oversight of its implementation.
On that timeline, if all went well and ministers and states signed off, it still wouldn't be time for the next budget cycle of the Commonwealth and states, would it?
It's difficult for me to answer questions in this area because I don't want to enter into matters that might be cabinet incompetence. But there is no intention in that fourth row of table two to be avoiding the current budget process. I think we included June as a month where we might be consulting states and territories. But I would hope that the Commonwealth might make decisions in May.
Or a May budget, but that would not necessarily mean states that might need to provide funding that would miss the budget. The point I'm trying to make is that even if there's agreement on that timeframe and it requires additional resources, it would not be until mid 2022 that funding would be available. Is that a possible scenario?
I don't understand state budget processes in as much detail, but I think some states have budgets earlier in the year, some states have budgets later in the year. I think any time that we conclude the development of the roadmap is going to lead to a long lead time for someone.
Does that then explain why your initial advice, that short term with one to two years is now one to three years?
No, the only intention there is to align it with the primary healthcare ten year plan.
Can I turn now to the specific issue around education and training? And initially, the roadmap process was going to focus on medical and nursing schools. And it became apparent, didn't it, during the second round table on the second of November, that the stakeholders, if I can call the participants that, thought that the discussion around curriculum development needed to go well beyond medical and nursing schools and to tap in more broadly to other health professions and allied health? Is that right?
Yes, allied health, pharmacy and dentists.
When you talk about peak allied health, did you have a particular allied health profession in mind or were you talking about the peak representative body?
Could you refer me to the paragraph?
So I'm looking at paragraph twenty-seven. And that's where you make mention of representatives from medical and nursing organisations participated. And then you say along with peak allied health dental and pharmacy bodies. And the footnote tells us that there are a number of organisations listed there. What I'm trying to understand is when you use the expression allied health, what exactly do you mean by that? Do you mean just the peak bodies covering all forms of allied health or particular areas of allied health? What do you mean by allied health?
So allied health is a complicated area. There are a number of allied health professions that are regulated by the Australian Health Professionals Regulatory Agency, but they are not all of the allied health professions. There are some self-regulating professions. Some definitions of allied health include the physical therapies and exclude mental health professionals or exclude pharmacy or exclude dental. Some include all of those things. But we don't have any intention to be excluding any group.
All right, look at the list of organisations that attended. This is your footnote three on page seven. They are the representative bodies and associations. Is that right? They're not the regulatory bodies. You agree with that?
That's correct.
And the pharmacy board, Mr Simmons from the pharmacy board and Ms Phillips from the psychological board have told us in the evidence that they've provided to this Royal Commission, paragraph sixty-nine to seventy for Mr Simmons and seventy-eight to seventy-nine for Ms Phillips, that they were unaware of the roadmap until they got a notice from this Royal Commission to provide evidence relevant to this hearing. So when you're talking about allied health, you're talking about the representative bodies, but not the regulatory bodies? Is that right?
That's who we've been consulting to date. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't engage with the regulatory bodies or the boards and various boards and councils to implement the roadmap. But in developing the roadmap, we've been focusing on the stakeholder representative bodies.
And what about the accreditation bodies, the various councils? There hasn't been any formal involvement of those bodies into the roadmap process, has there?
Not to date, but again, when we've reached a consensus on how to approach this issue and moving to implementation, we would be engaging them at that point.
So at the meeting on the nineteenth of November, which was the targeted discussion group on curriculum development in intellectual disability healthcare, and this is the meeting you didn't attend. But you've said in your statement at paragraph thirty, consensus was not reached on the optimal approach because some stakeholders were advocating standalone programmes and other stakeholders were advocating embedding learning and training for curriculum in all aspects. I'm trying to paraphrase paragraph thirty. What was the upshot of this inability to reach consensus in terms of how you've moved forward on the curriculum review and development?
So we have decided that we need to keep discussing the issue until we can find a consensus approach. At one of the other targeted consultations, this issue also came up. I had follow-up discussions with Professors Trumble and Prince from the University of Melbourne Medical School about their ideas about where we could reach an acceptable outcome. And we'd be intending through the remainder of the process to try to get consensus on this issue.
When you say consensus, that rather suggests that you're looking at an either or approach. So either or, you either have standalone or you have embedded. What's wrong with pursuing both approaches at the same time? Would they not be complementary?
So in my statement at paragraph thirty, I use the word mandatory. So it's the standalone mandatory units that are the issue. I don't think there's any objection to having standalone units that people might elect to study or if they were going to specialise in this area, being mandatory as part of their specialisation. I think the objection is to standalone mandatory units as part of undergraduate or entry, other entry level courses.
If the distinction is then between mandatory and voluntary, if you're talking about mandatory units of study, don't you have to include the accreditation bodies?
So the department is not advocating mandatory units of study. The department is trying to find a consensus from the sector that we can put to the minister and that is implementable. And the discussion with the sector is heading towards mandatory competencies being included in undergraduate and entry level courses and voluntary units of study that people might want to undertake and specialised units of study that people might want to undertake.
So before you make a decision about which approach is optimal, as you say, who else needs to be consulted before you make a final decision?
So if we head down this route of mandatory competencies and standards, then we will need to consult the Australian Health Professionals Regulatory Agency, the various boards and councils, and for those professions that are not regulated, the relevant professional bodies.
And when would that happen, given the timeline that you've described in your statement?
Well, it will need to happen quickly, but we're not at that point yet.
So I've got, can you understand, I've got a difficulty with the timeline that suggests the final roadmap by the thirty first of March? But if you say that there's further consultation that needs to be taken with respect to the curriculum development of the roadmap, that's a very short period of time to undertake what might be a very large consultative exercise before the thirty first of March. Would you agree?
Yes, but I think, as I indicated earlier, we may not be able to reach consensus on all issues by the thirty first of March. We might need to work some issues out during the implementation phase. And we're intending to have an external body to help us do that, including many of the stakeholders that have been involved in discussions to date.
Would part of the consideration on curriculum development also look to the extent to which the Commonwealth would fund any review of curricula and development of curricula across the health professions?
So the Commonwealth doesn't have direct legislative levers in this situation. So the levers that we can use are persuasion and funding. And funding decisions are taken by the government in budget processes.
I think, and I'm paraphrasing Professor Trolle's evidence, and you may have read his evidence from appearing in this hearing last year, is he has identified the absence of clear levers as one of the issues. And persuasion seems not to have been particularly effective over the last twenty or thirty years. So is it just funding that the Commonwealth can use as a lever here?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily agree with Professor Trolle's view that facilitation and persuasion, sorry, I've added in the word facilitation there, facilitation and persuasion are not effective. Throughout the period of the pandemic, facilitation has been a key role that the Commonwealth has played. There has been really good engagement with this national roadmap process and a lot of goodwill. And I think there is goodwill to support change. And as I say, if there's funding available, that's a matter for the government to decide.
So I think paragraph thirty-four, you tell the Royal Commissioners that the final content of the roadmap is subject to the decisions of the minister and government. And do we take it that you undertake to provide the commission with a written update later this year following further decisions on finalisation of the roadmap and implementation? Is that right?
That's correct.
As highly as an undertaking?
Yes.
The final question that I wanted to ask, and I'm mindful of the time, is you may have seen a copy of the propositions document. And some of the propositions touch upon matters that are the subject of the roadmap and others not necessarily so. Are you able to say on behalf of the Commonwealth Department of Health whether the department has any comments or views on the propositions?
So I don't have the propositions in front of me, but I have read them. The Health Workforce Division in the department usually leads on professional education, training and development issues. And I haven't discussed the propositions with that division. But my view is all of the propositions are supportable.
Thank you. Mr Cottrell, thank you for your time. I'll just check now with the commissioners whether they have any further questions.
Commissioner Galbally?
I'd like to bring up a question I asked in public hearing six. And that's regarding people, it's regarding the First Nations scholarship schemes that the Commonwealth fund for First Nations people to do medicine and whether there was a similar proposal for people with disabilities to do medicine, you know, if their entry was appropriate. And I'd really just like to have that answered at some point. It clearly isn't in the roadmap, but I wondered why not, if cultural change is what we want from the roadmap?
Thanks, Commissioner. I can't give you a direct answer right now. I'm happy to take that on notice and come back to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
Can I come back to the question of what's been happening during the pandemic, Mr Cottrell? You'll be familiar, no doubt, with the contents of the Royal Commission's report arising out of public hearing five?
Yes.
You will know, I think, that the report was presented to the Governor General on the twenty-sixth of November in twenty twenty and table in Parliament on the thirtieth of November twenty twenty. You're familiar with more or less those dates?
Yeah.
And you'll remember, I think, that recommendation one was that there'd be an early response from government to that report. Has there been any discussion of the report on public hearing five on the round table?
On the, in the round table process on intellectual disability?
In the round table process since the thirtieth of November two thousand and twenty, when the report was tabled in Parliament.
So we have a targeted discussion scheduled to learn the lessons from COVID nineteen and for.
A targeted discussion on the report or on the COVID nineteen generally?
So there are two processes that have been running in parallel and they're confusing because we use the word round table liberally. But there's been a round table process in relation to the health of people with intellectual disability. And in my statement in table one, we have a targeted discussion scheduled for the sixteenth of March titled incorporating COVID nineteen implications into the national roadmap. And that's intended to bring the COVID work into the intellectual disability area. At the same time and throughout the pandemic, the department has convened the COVID nineteen Advisory Committee and a broader COVID nineteen round table for people with disability. And that round table and that advisory committee have both discussed various elements of the Royal Commission's report.
Are you aware of when there is likely to be some response to that report?
That's a matter for the government.
Has the department provided any kind of report on the COVID nineteen report of the Royal Commission?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any of the council present wish to ask any questions of Mr Cottrell?
No further questions on behalf of the Commonwealth. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Cotrell, for returning to the Royal Commission and giving your evidence today and for your statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, that concludes the evidence for public hearing ten over the three days of hearings. And, uh, Commissioners, I think you were going to make some directions.
Yes, I have those, I have those in front of me. Do you want me to read through those or will you read through them?
Well, these are the Commissioners' directions. I'm happy if you issue the directions.
Good, thank you. The directions that, uh, are made as the result of this public hearing ten and as, Ms Eastman has just said, this is the third day of the hearing. The directions will be as follows. One, by Tuesday sixteen, March two thousand and twenty one, any witnesses who took questions on notice during this hearing should provide their answers in writing to the Office of the Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission. These answers should be targeted and concise. Two, council assisting the Royal Commission will consider any additional material produced and determine if any additional steps need to be taken. By Tuesday twenty third, March two thousand and twenty one, council assisting will tender into evidence whatever additional material she considers appropriate. Three, council assisting will then prepare written submissions to the Royal Commission, setting out the evidence that relates to the propositions which were examined at this hearing. The submissions may also include suggestions about further lines of inquiry that could be pursued by the Royal Commission before recommendations might be formulated in relation to those issues. The material might also include proposed recommendations that may be made by the Royal Commission. Four, by seven, April two thousand and twenty one, the council assisting submissions will be made available on a confidential basis to those parties with leave to appear and the witnesses who gave written or oral evidence at this hearing. Five, those parties who wish to make submissions in response to council assisting submissions should do so in writing by seven, May two thousand and twenty one. The submissions in response should be concise and should not include any additional proposed evidence. Six, following consideration of council assisting submissions, along with any submissions received in response, the four Royal Commissioners who have sat at this hearing will prepare a short report on the hearing. That report will be made public in due course. Those are the directions arising out of this hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms Eastman, did you want to make any statements finally or is that enough for the purposes of today's hearing?
This has been a very long day and so the less I say at this point, the better.
Thank you. I would just like to say that, uh, this, like all of the Commission's hearings, requires a great deal of preparation and organisation. This hearing has been a little different than other hearings that have been held by the Royal Commission in that we have been hearing from, uh, people involved in universities, in professional bodies and, uh, certifying authorities in panels. Nonetheless, there is still a very large amount of organisation that is required. And I want to express the appreciation of the Commissioners to the Office of Solicitor Assisting, uh, in the preparation of the hearing, to all of those who have contributed to the smooth working of this hearing. On this occasion, we have had three Commissioners sitting in the one room and hopefully, very shortly, we'll be able to have hearings with Commissioners all present at the one time and members of the public permitted to join in, uh, at least to, uh, participate by being present in the hearing room. But in the meantime, much organisation goes into these hearings and in this case, Commissioner Galbally joined us from Melbourne and we express our gratitude to Law and Order for facilitating that and ensuring that the hearing has proceeded smoothly. There are others, of course, within the staff of the Royal Commission who have contributed greatly to the organisation and conduct of the hearing and we are very grateful to each and every one of them. We'll now adjourn.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.